Thank you. We now have a quorum. So, at this time, if you would like to join us, we'll rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Today, the invocation will be read by Reverend Lou Ellen Hartley. She was born in Oklahoma and raised in Colorado, and since then, she has lived in a wide variety of places across the country and has served churches in northern Illinois, coastal Georgia, northern Minnesota, and central Missouri. In each of these communities in which she's served, Lou Ellen has worked to address issues of food insecurity, domestic violence, homelessness, volunteered as a tutor in elementary schools, and served on nonprofit boards for conference centers, senior living facilities, and homeless shelters. Lou Ellen and her husband Brett enjoy the outdoors, cooking, travel, and adventure. And thank you. She is the Reverend at First Presbyterian Church in Inverness. And thank you for joining us. And the pledge will be led by Heiko Kollmacher.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Let's pray. Gracious God, Creator and Sustainer of us all, we offer thanks for this day, for the opportunity to engage freely in civic life, and for those who are willing to take up the challenge to lead. We pray you will give the commissioners the wisdom they need to make just decisions for the great and the small of our community. We pray that they will have the creativity and energy they need to address the needs of this ever-changing county. We pray for law enforcement personnel who are hard at work today and other first responders who every day can see us at our worst. They can face danger and immeasurable stress, and yet they continue to serve. Bless them, oh gracious God, with days of peace. Watch over the people who are behind the scenes, who are working diligently to make sure our county keeps running smoothly, from custodians to receptionists to managers and everyone in between. Thank you for their hard work, which often goes unnoticed by those of us on the outside. In short, oh gracious God, watch over this meeting, and may those who are gathered here do their business well. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend.
If you all would please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Deputy Clerk, if you could do a roll call, please?
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 14th day of March 2023. And attendants are Chair Ruthie Schlebach, First Vice Chair Hallie Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bayes, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lund.
Approval of the agenda. Administrator, is there any additional additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are. P1, request to retain outside counsel. Also, E20, additional item, revenue study proposal from Neighbors, Giblin, and Nickerson. Also, E12, which is just some additional information, which would be the designation, signatory authority would be to the county administrator. There's also three items to consideration to be pulled. One is T3. Also, E16 and E19, we ask for consideration. We received a correspondence earlier this morning from the TDC requesting those to be pulled.
Could you repeat the pulled ones, please?
T3, E16, and E19.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, looking for a motion to accept the agenda with the deletions and additional information.
Madam Chair, give me one moment to get my bearings here.
Please forgive us. We went from 10 o'clock. We had a five-minute break, so we're all trying to figure out our ways. This one's cracking up. I'm not sure.
Clarification, so you're pulling E16 and E19?
Correct.
But you're not pulling E17?
Not at this point. Those are the two that I was asked to consider, to have the board to consider those two.
Well, then I would, I mean, if we're going to pull one, let's pull them all because they're all three.
E16 through 19.
They're all TDC-related.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Just might as well, let's get it all together at once. Okay, so E... Commissioner Bayes, you're looking to pull E16, 17, 18, and 19?
Madam Chair, if I may, E16 and 19 are not time-sensitive. E17 and 18 are.
Want to pull for discussion? I know you want to pull them. Yes.
I mean, we can discuss them.
Commissioner Kennard.
I don't have to pull for them, but we can pull for discussion.
I didn't mean to interrupt, and I'm fine with pulling any of these. My concern with the E16 is that that is a, that's a matching figure. My understanding is that these negotiations have been going on for about a year to get Swift Mudd back involved with this project. Swift Mudd was involved early on. They went a different route than the way that of planting, replanting eelgrass than what Save Crystal River Group was doing. And they pulled out of the project. They're now back at the table and bringing $250,000 and went to the TDC and asked for matching funds. After a year of negotiation, I would hate to see them get cold feet again and leave without...
According to backup material, though, it's not been a year. What I read, it was...
I'm just saying that the negotiations with them, my understanding is they've been talking with them for about a year now, trying to get them to come to the table. So I would like to see us support that. If the board's, I mean, obviously, it's a discretion of the board, so if the board's determined to pull it, then we'll pull it. But that's right now, and who knows if it would go away, but right now, Swift Mudd's got a quarter of a million dollars on the table to help continue the process.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes, ma'am.
Just maybe, I think what would be very helpful is if we could have a presentation by the TDC. I'm not sure how long it's been since the public and this board has actually had a presentation. I think it would be wonderful to know some more history behind the 250. I'm not opposed to it. You know, the state has allocated about $42 million to that program. They have done some really good work. I would love to get this same group of people together at the table for Home Assas and the lakeside of our county. I think we could use some help in all of it. My question particularly with this is how the funding source is applied and if it's, and through the grants, if it really is the appropriate way to go about it? That would be my major question there. You know, I don't know what our STAR report reflects anymore for collections, if we're up or down, if the public really understands that this money is not taxpayer-driven. It comes from heads in beds, if you will. So if you're staying in a hotel or you have a rental of six months or less, that's where the income is derived for the TDC to appropriate these funds out. I would like to know if we have an updated visitor profile, what that profile looks like, if we know where our people are coming from, and how they're determining where their advertising campaign dollars go. So I just think it'd be a great thing, you know, for this board and the public to have a better review of what the TDC requests are and how they're getting applied, and also some of the, just the annual budget for the different things that they do. I think the public, I got enough responses in my email box that there's some questions about it. Again, the 250, I'm not as concerned about because I think they've done some really good work. I think it's, we have to continue the investment, but I think the investment needs to be bigger. I think we also need to look at Home Assas and the lakeside, the east side of the county for some monies there.
The director has sent the email to pull E16 and E19, so...
If that's said, then I would pull them all.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate that Commissioner Bayes has concerns about this, but all of the Madam Media presentations, the minutes, everything are all available online, so any of you could go and look from month to month how our STAR reports are doing and all the data about our tourism. We are knocking it out of the park. Every single meeting, I'm just, I have to get this out, okay? We have to get business done. We can't keep pulling everything. I do agree that we should have, you know, we should have a presentation, okay, by Tourist Development Council. However, because that'll make everybody be, sorry, I'm just a little frustrated. Citizens can see what it's all about. I think that's great. I love transparency. It's all online, but hey, we can do a presentation, and it makes it a little bit easier for everybody to absorb. The point is, is that especially E18, we've been working on for a while. These are, we are a tourism business, which means we are run on a calendar of seasonality, okay? So some of these things are really time-sensitive. E17 and E18, I believe, we don't have, I don't know if we have John Pritchard in the audience, but I believe both of those are time-sensitive. The Save Crystal River was going to be done, that eelgrass planting was going to be done over the summer, so that is also mildly time-sensitive. But if Mr. Pritchard asks to pull it, then that's fine. I'm going to trust our executive director on that.
Okay.
And finally, I have already reached out to Home Assas and gotten the word back, I hope, to Too Far. I need to reach out to them personally, that they need to apply for the same levels of funding, as long as they do a really great scope of work, just like Save Crystal River did. Now I'm done.
Thank you.
So I just don't like, I don't want these to be pulled.
These have been requested to be pulled. Commissioner Bayes, do you have a motion that you want?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, and I think this is good discussion because we're talking about, you know, before we get to even approving our agenda, I think we need to be on the same page. And what I was going to say, or what I would like to say, is I agree 100% with where Commissioner Bayes is at. I would really like to see, and this was going to be some of my talking points with these other things, I would like to see more of the TDC funding going towards Home Assas, towards the east side of the county, the lakes, and I think we can get there with a presentation. My concern with the E16 is we've got, we've got Swift Mudd with a quarter of a million-dollar check in their hand, ready to give it to us with this matching funds. Maybe the check doesn't go anywhere, maybe it does, I don't know, but if they've got a check in hand, ready to hand it to us for these matching funds, and then we get this presentation, and I think we really start diving into the weeds in the very near future about how to get more funding going towards Home Assas and towards the east side of the county, towards the lakes.
Do you think Save Crystal River doesn't have $250,000 to just, until we can clear this up?
What's that?
You're concerned about Swift Mudd's check going away?
Yes.
I think we have some questions that need to be answered, and it was requested to pull it, so I would like to, if anybody has anything further to say. I'm looking to approve the agenda.
Well, it's a request. We don't have to honor the request.
I'm just going to point out that Mr. Pritchard is in the audience. I finally spotted him. If you want any questions answered, I'm sure he can come up and elaborate as to why.
Before anybody can come forward, we have to get the approval of the agenda. So, Board?
I would make the motion, then, if this is going to be the case, that if we're going to pull one, we're going to pull them all. So I would move to pull T3, E16, 17, 18, and 19.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
And add P1.
Oh, add P1, please.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions to the agenda. Looking for a second. Hearing none, that fails. Board, what is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda with the deletion of E17, 18, and 19, and the addition of, was it P?
One.
P1.
And T3, deletion of T3. Deletion of T3.
And the deletion of T3, yeah.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kennard.
Madam Chair, may I just ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know we do our consent agenda separately. If I wanted to pull something out just to be discussed separately, do you want me to do that now or wait as we approve this agenda, or wait until we're on consent agenda?
Ethic consent.
Yeah.
Ethic consent. So wait. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. The administrator reminded me, we also have the addition of E20.
E20.
So it would be...
P1, E20.
Are you saying P is in Papa?
P is in Peter, one. E20, additional information for E12, and pulling T3, and the motion is pulling E17, E18, and E19. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kennard.
Adding E, adding E20 and P1.
I said all that.
Okay, all right, sorry about that.
I have a motion on the floor. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment? No, it says it right there, sister.
I'm sorry, we don't take public input.
Not during the agenda.
Acceptance of the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That passes 4-1. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion. How would you like to do this, Commissioner Finnegan?
I would make a motion to approve, but I want to pull B12 and discuss separately, please. There's some people that would like to talk about that, and I may have a few things to say myself.
I would second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan to accept the consent agenda, B1 through B11 plus B13, pull B12 for discussion, and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Board, any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The consent agenda passes 5-0. Thank you. I have something in my eye. We're at Item C, Proclamations, Awards, and Presentations.
Are we going to do discussion on B12?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry.
It's okay.
It's been a day already. Okay, Commissioner Finnegan, you have the floor, B12.
Thank you. Some people have been reaching out to me about setting this public hearing, and I just want to remind everybody here that we're not making a decision today.
And I'm so sorry, this is my mistake. I need a motion to accept B12. Would you be willing to make the motion to accept B12 for discussion?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think we can just have a discussion first about this, correct, and decide whether or not she wants to make a motion.
Well, I think the idea is to have public input. That's what, I mean, that's what I thought she was saying.
Yes. You said there were people here that were just concerned, and you wanted to...
Okay, so I'll make them...
Do you just want to have the discussion and not open it up to public input?
I'll go ahead and, I think the public wants to speak, so if I need to make that motion just to open it up, I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan. Looking for a second on B12.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Okay, is that good? Are we on target? So now...
I just threw all the proclamations across the board.
Are we ready to discuss, ma'am?
Okay, so Board, would you like to lead it? Commissioner Finnegan, thank you.
Yes. So hearing from the public, the public, at least the ones coming to me, are happy that we have an ordinance for fortune tellers. I do understand why, back in the '90s, this ordinance was created. We just had a three-hour presentation for mental health services, and we talked about how they're heavily regulated through the state, through GCF, through ACA. There's many, many regulations. There has to be degreed individuals. People have training to help people. I worked in a social service industry for a long time, some degreed, some not, but still had hours of service that had to be performed before they could talk to people and help them, certain educational requirements, and again, we had heavy audits from the state and different grant funders. People go to their doctors for help. They have to be educated. They're watched, they're licensed. Even people at their churches, pastors, are held to a high degree of accountability by masses of people, and some are, you know, I wouldn't say regulated, but have statements of faith with the state and federal government. So we're talking about every industry that is supposed to help people is regulated somehow, that has some degree of somebody watching that. But when certain people enjoy going to a seer or a fortune teller because they want to know their future, because that's what they believe in, how do they know that they're getting what they're trying to get? So my point is, nobody's looking out for them. So in the '90s, the board put some things in place, that they were at least going to do some background checks. I feel like if we don't have an ordinance, that this just opens up Citrus County to be ripe with fraud in this industry. And I think that if we do get rid of this ordinance, it's not going to take much time for people to come back here complaining to the county that we haven't protected them. And I do feel we have a right and a sense of duty to look out for the people that elected us. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. Board?
Madam Chair, I'm not real clear what the motion is, but I would not support, honestly, even setting a public hearing for it. I'm not going to support doing away with this for exactly the reasons that Commissioner Finnegan just pointed out. It's an industry that is, I don't know if it's largely unregulated or completely unregulated, but there's, our ordinance provides some degree of protection for the residents of the county, that they've got to live here for so long, they've got to have so many people vouching for them and so forth. I think that's a minimal level of protection that provides, but still does not tread on these individuals' rights to practice this. So I don't think there's a need for a public hearing unless we've got three that would be willing to support doing away with the ordinance, but I certainly will not be there. I will be there physically, but I'm not going to support doing away with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes, anything?
I'll make the motion to leave this just as it is.
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now and a second, so bring that back. And do you have anything to talk about this?
No. I think it was stated very clearly by my fellow two commissioners. If you're a cosmetologist, you have a state organization you have to adhere to. If you're in the insurance business or any kind of financial services, you're regulated by the state to do that. We have people that make phone calls now to someone and say, hey, my, you know, this is your grandson, and I've been put in jail, and you'd need to go down to Walmart or the Western Union and send $2,500, and there's absolutely zero recovery for this. So I don't see the need to open up Pandora's Box any further, other than if somebody in this can tell us where we're going to get the money to fund our county, and if they can do that and hole it off, I'm all in.
Okay. Commissioner Davis, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm not going to be in support of changing it, so...
The only thing I would see in this, I totally agree with you, I was glad you pulled it, I wanted to discuss this, is the only problem I saw in this whole thing, I did not agree with just deleting it. I made mention that to our county attorney, but the B2, applicant shall establish good moral character, that was a little archaic to me because who's going to determine that? And I'm sure they could raise five people in their family or in, you know, client base to swear to their high moral character. So that, there might be, need to be a little tweaking to this, but I would never support getting rid of this. We do have a motion on the floor for discussion.
Would you like me to pull that motion?
Do we have to open that to the public first? Because the motion was to do a workshop on this and pulling it, is that what it was? A public hearing? Excuse me, that workshop on my mind.
I think it's within the board's purview. It sounds like at least three of you want to leave it alone, so you can probably rescind that motion and follow it up with a real quick other one.
Thank you. Would you like to keep your motion on the floor for the...
I would like to rescind my motion to set the public hearing.
And I have a second by Commissioner Bayes. Are you willing to rescind it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that has failed on the floor. Okay, was it you? I'm sorry.
Then do we need a motion?
It was Davis. I'm sorry. It was Davis. Do you, you good with that? Okay. So, that has, that motion has failed, it's been rescinded, so I'm looking for a motion for B12.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion for Item B12 to leave our ordinance just as it stands.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Is there any further board discussion on this? I don't think so. Any public comment on B12? See, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0 to leave that on the books. Thank you. Okay. And thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Okay, at this time, we're going to do proclamations. Veronica Campshire is going to read. We have six or seven? Six. Proclamations. We do have a time certain at 1:30, and it's 1:30 right now. So should we move forward with this, or go to the time certain?
What is the 1:30?
It's up to you, Commissioner.
Let's push the 1:30, if you will, and let's get through these proclamations.
Madam Chair?
We need to vote.
Yes.
Motion approved, Item C1 through 6.
Second.
I think you need to run this meeting today. I think not eating breakfast or lunch has made me a little hazy. Okay, so please, motion on the floor for C1 through 6. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. Please join me out up front.
Could those individuals representing the 21st Annual March for Meals Month, please come forward?
Oh my goodness, I need to drink water.
Good God.
March 2023 is the 21st Annual March for Meals Month. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign on March 2002 to recognize the historic month and the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas the 2023 Observance for March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering... by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Older American Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered in Citrus County, have served our community admirably for 50 years. And whereas volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels programs in Citrus County are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors throughout the county and help seniors maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas the Older Americans Act nutrition programs provide a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. And whereas the Meals on Wheels program is Citrus County, in Citrus County, deserves recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make in our local community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as the 21st Annual March for Meals Month, executed this 14th day of March 2023.
We have another part of this presentation. These lovely ladies here are members of our Friends of the Community Centers, and they volunteer their time to enrich the community centers for the seniors that attend. And they operate the Circle of Friends Gift Shop located in Citrus County Resource Center. And each year during March for Meals, they make a presentation of the proceeds that they made in that shop to the Meals on Wheels program. Today, they're presenting $5,470 to Meals on Wheels. And since 2010, when they started the gift shop, this will make a total of $55,843 total that they have made for the Meals on Wheels program.
Will those individuals representing the Fix a Leak Week proclamation please come forward? Whereas household leaks account for more than 1 trillion gallons of water wasted across the United States each year, equal to the annual household water use of more than 11 million homes. And whereas finding and fixing leaks is as easy as check, twist, replace, e.g., check toilets for silent leaks, twist to tighten fixture connections, replace broken fixtures with WaterSense labeled models. And whereas many common household leaks, including worn toilet flappers, leaking showerheads, and dripping faucets are easily correctable. And whereas fixing leak can save homeowners an average of more than 10,000 gallons of water per year or the amount of water in a typical backyard swimming pool. And whereas WaterSense is a voluntary partnership program sponsored by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to protect the future of our nation's water supply by promoting water efficiency and WaterSense labeled products. And whereas EPA's WaterSense program celebrates Fix a Leak Week, the third week of March, as a time to remind Americans to check their household fixtures and irrigation systems for leaks. And whereas Citrus County is partnering with WaterSense to encourage Americans to detect and fix leaks and promote efficient water use to ensure adequate water supplies for future generations. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County does hereby proclaim March 20th through 26th, 2003, as Fix a Leak Week in Citrus County, executed this 14th day of March 2023. Will those individuals representing National Agriculture Week please come forward? Whereas agriculture is an essential industry to our nation and the world, providing food, fiber, and fuel for a global population expected to reach 9.7 billion by 2050. Agriculture supports natural environments, promotes biodiversity, prevents soil, soil erosion, and maintains habitat for wildlife. Whereas agricultural producers are an important component of the cultural and economic prosperity of Florida. The rich history of agriculture has been built by the work of farmers, fishermen, ranchers, and many more who invested in the natural resources of Florida. Whereas we honor the contributions made by the Citrus County agriculture community, including farmers, farmworkers, ranchers, foresters, and other professionals who collectively generate over $13 million in market value of products sold on more than 63,000 acres under production in Citrus County. Whereas the University of Florida Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences, UFIFES, Citrus County Extension, engages community partners with the mission to develop knowledge in agricultural, human, and natural resources, and is committed to ensuring educational opportunities and knowledge are accessible to sustain and enhance the quality of human life through innovative farming practices. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County hereby proclaims March 21st through March 27th, 2023, as National Agriculture Week in Citrus County, Florida, executed this 14th day of March 2023. Would those individuals representing the Hal Porter 4-H Scholarship Endowment please come forward? Whereas Citrus County recognizes the valuable contribution of the UFIFES Extension 4-H Youth Development Program to our community and to the more than 200,000 young people in Florida impacted by 4-H. Whereas the core values of 4-H are develop, are to develop citizenship, leadership, responsibility, and life skills in young people through experiential learning programs, simultaneously developing lifelong learners committed to service and community. Whereas Hal Porter recognizes the value of positive youth development, and his commitment not only improves the lives of the participating youth, but also benefits the community by his service to 4-H, furthering the excellence of the local 4-H Youth Development Program. Whereas the Hal Porter 4-H Scholarship Endowment has been created by George and Carolyn Richardson as an endowment with the University of Florida Foundation. The scholarship will be available annually to the Florida 4-H Scholarship process with priority for graduating Citrus County 4-H members. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County recognizes Hal Porter for his lifelong commitment to Citrus County 4-H and the youth of our community through service, leadership, and scholarship, executed this 14th day of March 2023.
Ladies and gentlemen, just wanna thank you for this honor today. There are a lot of deserving children that I'm gonna be glad to be a part of. Wanted to say, I started with Extension and 4-H when Extension was in the basement of the old courthouse. So we've certainly come a long way with our county, uh, support and our support from the University of Florida. And I'm excited also to tell you that the Citrus County Fair is coming, and we're gonna continue our, celebrating our agricultural heritage, and we invite you all to attend. Thank you so much.
Will those individuals representing the Irish American Heritage Month please come forward? I got a lot to read here. Whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had emigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial role in America's war for independence. And whereas five signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish descent, and three signers were Irish-born. And whereas Irish Americans helped to fashion a system of government for our young nation, 22 presidents have proudly proclaimed their Irish-American heritage. And whereas in 197, in 1792, Irish-born James Hoban provided the architectural plans for the White House and served as one of the supervising architects for the construction of the Capitol. And whereas Irish-born Commodore John Barry was recognized by the United States Congress in September of 2002 as the first flag officer of the United States Navy. Commodore John Barry fought the last sea battle of the American Revolution off the coast of Florida. And whereas in 1813, Captain Oliver Perry, an Irish-American, achieved a major naval victory in the Battle of Lake Erie. And whereas in 1942, the Five Sullivan Brothers made the ultimate sacrifice for democracy and freedom during the Naval Battle of Guadalcanal, and later had the destroyer USS Sullivan commissioned in their memory. And whereas the Irish first came to Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, first as missionaries and mercenary soldiers, and then as planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators. Three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were actually Irish military officers. And whereas Richard Arthur, an Irish-born priest from Limerick, who was appointed parish priest for St. Augustine in 1597, an ecclesiastical judge of La Florida, established the first public school in America and opened it to both boys and girls of all races. And whereas Andrew Jackson, whose family came from County Antrim, served as Florida's military governor following its acquisition by the United States. Whereas Irish Americans, since America's inception, have provided and continued to provide leadership and service to this nation's political, business, and religious establishments. And whereas it is fitting and proper to celebrate the rich cultural heritage and many valuable contributions of Irish Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Irish American Heritage Month in Citrus County, Florida, executed this 14th day of March 2023.
Like a minute?
Go ahead. You're Irish, so you gotta keep it down.
My wife would say, "That's quite impossible." But Madam Chair, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, Giurich, good afternoon. On behalf of the Irish-American community in Florida, I would like to express my gratitude for your kind consideration in designating March as Irish American Heritage Month. Currently, in the state of Florida, 70 such proclamations have been issued. St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, is without question the biggest celebration of a national day across the globe. Throughout American and Canadian cities, in Ireland, the United Kingdom, Germany, Norway, Denmark, Australia, New Zealand, South Korea, Japan, Nigeria, Grenada, and even on the island of Montserrat in the Caribbean, the only other country in the world to declare St. Patrick's Day a national holiday, people will be celebrating this occasion and proclaiming themselves Irish for, uh, for the day. During the month of March, Irish Floridians proudly reflect on this legacy of their Irish forebears who have contributed significantly in many areas, as well as many other ethnic and racial groups have come to the United States from the four corners of the world and who have assisted in developing this great country of ours. As a current Florida, uh, AOH State Secretary, immediate past National Director for the Southern States, and past Florida State President of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, the oldest and largest Irish organization in the world, tracing our origins back to the 1500s, I would like to acknowledge the extreme, extreme honor the Commissioners of Citrus County have bestowed upon all Irish Americans living within the great state of Florida. Gudremahagad, Agus Lo Ela Podrick, Vey Hanukich. Thank you, and have a blessed St. Patrick's Day.
Last but not least, could those individuals representing the 140th anniversary of the laying out and surveying of Floral City, Florida, please come forward? Whereas Floral City, Florida was laid out in a grid pattern and surveyed in 1883 by Senator Austin Mann and Surveyor W.H. Havron on land owned in the 1860s by John Paul Formy Duval, and inherited by his daughter, Celeste Yule Duval, and her husband Jim Baker. And whereas Senator A.S. Mann was responsible for getting the legislature to establish Citrus County on June 2nd, 1887. And Surveyor Havron surveyed the southern border of the county and promoted Floral City with 25 stereopticon prints. And whereas Havron described Floral City as, "Located on a high elevation on a peninsula between Chalo, Sala, Apopka Lake, and Lake Consuelo. Nestled among hills, its sandy beach skirted with mammoth live oaks. It is situated in the Great Orange Belt, where all kinds of vegetation and semi-tropical fruits flourish to perfection. There is no place in Florida where the sportsman can gratify his taste more fully than here. The lake is full of fish, while the woods are teeming with deer, turkey, and small game of all kinds." And whereas the town's original business center was located along a rustic way from steamboat landing on the Sala-Papka Lake to south on Orange Avenue, and moved to the present location after the railroad was extended through town in 1893 to support the booming phosphate industry. And whereas during the boom period, Floral City grew so fast that in 1907, it was incorporated into a township, but was rescinded nearly five years later when the threat of war stopped the flow of phosphate to European markets. And with no alternative industry, the population declined rapidly to today's levels. And whereas Floral City has maintained its two-lane shaded roadways, rural vernacular architecture, and natural waterways over these 140 years with a population dedicated to the preservation of this heritage. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby recognize the 140th anniversary of the laying out and surveying of Floral City, Florida, executed this 14th day of March 2023.
Yes, we, well, we'd like to invite you all to our celebration, um, March 25th. We've invited the, uh, residents of Floral City and businesses of Floral City to pick any decade of these 14 decades. They can dress in their favorite decade. We have 60s, 70s, 80s, 1900s, and they're gonna parade down the avenue. And then there'll be a party downtown, so come and see us. Thank you. At this time, before opening to the public, we're gonna do the time certens. And if it's all right with the Board, I would like to move I-2 first, since we have both city managers here. Does, is everybody okay with that? Do I have to make a formal proclamation that I'm moving up? Oh, special treatment. Special, okay, thank you. So if we can go ahead and move to I-2, please. Mr. Howard?
Ask Erin to actually come forward for this, please.
Thank you. I-2, we have a 145 public hearing on the gas tax. Inter-local Agreement A and B. Erin, if you would like to lead us in this?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. This item is a public hearing on the gas tax inter-local agreements. The county entered into a gas tax inter-local agreement with the city of Crystal River and the city of Inverness on November 1st of 2005. In accordance with Florida Statute 336.025, the county is required to hold a public hearing on the terms of the gas tax inter-local agreements every two years. The last public hearing was December 1st of 2020. Uh, the distribution percentages for the two cities and the county are proposed to be unchanged.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd move approval of item I-2 A and B.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Bayes. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner, you need to, Madam Chairman, you need to have the public hearing first before you do the motion. Sorry.
I was just following Commissioner Bayes, but I did get a second from Commissioner Finnegan there.
Jumped the gun.
I know. Okay, so we need to conduct the public hearing for the purposes of hearing public comment on the gas tax. Inter-local agreements. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Going once, going twice. I'm gonna close the public hearing part, portion of this.
I knew it was gonna happen like that. It was my curboyan.
It's just all, it's just like, I, stop. Okay, Commissioner Bayes.
Motion to approve I-2 A and B.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Pass is five zero. We have two city managers here. Would anybody like to speak? Okay. And you can now go back to work. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go back to I-1. It's the 130 time certain. PFM Financial Advisors, Citrus County Debt Overview. This is a discussion and staff direction regarding further information for funding options for potential projects. We have Erin Doran here, and...
I would like to introduce Laura Howell. She's a director with PFM Financial Advisors, and she is going to give us the presentation for the county debt overview.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. As Erin had said, we serve as financial advisor for the county, so we're here to talk through today to give you a brief overview of your current outstanding debt, discuss potential cap, capacity for future needs, and the process of how we go about that. So, not sure, are we on slide two? Okay. So to start, this is an overview of the debt that's outstanding for your general fund. We do go into detail on all three of these credits as well on later slides, but we do have the half-sent sales tax outstanding in a principal amount of 3.9 million, the communication services tax outstanding in a principal amount of 5.5 million, and then the covenant to budget inappropriate in an outstanding amount of 45.3 million. All of this debt does expire in 2038, and you can see it kind of steps down over, over the years. The next is your water and wastewater system. Your senior lien debt is outstanding in the amount of 34.6 million, with your SRF loans in the amount of 19.8 million. Please note that the amount shown here that does expire in 2037 is just the senior lien debt, not the SRF debt on the wastewater. So for the half-sent sales tax, these slides go into a little bit more detail of what we just went through. You do see the debt significantly decreases down in 2026, before the final maturity of October 1st, 2034. Note in the chart, kind of over on the right-hand side, we show the amount of pledged revenues, and the things we kind of hone in on when we're looking at this is the additional bonds test requirement, which is in your bond documents that's been brought to prior commissioners for approval when we set this up in the resolutions. And so that 1.3 times coverage is important to look at when issuing debt, as well as with the rating agencies consider. With your MADS coverage is at 11.2 times. So this is showing very strong coverage on your half-sent sales tax, and the MADS is in 2024, as you can see. So when that steps down, your coverage will greatly increase moving forward. The communicator, communication services tax, the additional bonds requirement is 1.35 times, and we're currently at 1.69 times. So right now, this is just, sort of is what it is. We wouldn't really look at this as a potential revenue source for future issuance. The covenant to budget inappropriate debt on slide six, your anti-dilution test requirement is 1.5 times. You're currently at 9.4 times. There's quite a lot of debt in this. Oftentimes, counties will use this. It's sort of a catch-all, rather than your water and wastewater, which is a specific source of revenue, half-sent sales tax, your communication tax. Those are all very specific, and then your covenant to budget appropriate kind of lumps in everything in your general fund that would secure this debt that's outstanding here. This debt does expire currently with the last maturity of October 1st, 2037 as well. For your water and wastewater system, the additional bonds test is at 1.15 times, and you're currently at 5.79 times coverage. So very strong coverage on this as well, and very strong ratings as well. And I meant to say that on the prior page for the covenant to budget appropriate, the county has very strong ratings on that as well. So on slide eight, looking forward, you know, throughout the state of Florida with the growth and the needs many municipalities are facing, we're here to kind of help you see what the options are between using pay-go funds that are available financing or a combination of both moving forward. Oftentimes, governments will finance if it's a really large capital project that they don't have those funds on hand to pay for, to mitigate rising construction costs. Sure you guys are all aware how much construction's been going up, so locking in those contracts earlier, a lot of entities have been doing throughout the state of Florida. Taxpayer, ratepayer, oftentimes people will say, "If this is going to benefit the citizens for 30 years, let's spread it over the course of 30 years rather than pulling all the money out of the general fund." And while rates have been increasing, they are still historically low. It's still an attractive time to borrow. It's not what we saw two years ago, but it's still, you would still get attractive rates in this market. There's really two options that you would have for any sort of general needs that aren't specific to your water and wastewater, and that would be your revenue bonds. So your non-advalorem revenues, your sales tax, that's available, and then there's general obligations bonds, which are the full faith and credit of the issuer as you tax directly to the taxpayers on their homes. But this would require a vote from the voters to approve general obligation bonds to move So on your revenue bonds, you could issue any revenue bonds with a majority vote by the county commission. You must adhere to the anti-dilution test, which is what I had said we do look at, which the coverage for, the covenant to budget inappropriate is 1.5 times minimum. You currently are at 9.4 times. I do say this, though, that just because the capacity is there doesn't mean you should issue up to that amount. There's still your ongoing needs that you're paying with those funds annually that you would need to take into consideration on how much you can actually afford in your debt service moving forward while still meeting all of your additional needs moving out there. The covenant to budget is generally less restrictive, allowing you to make those debt service payments and some of the other ones as well. On slide 10, you'll see, this is just an example, if you were to do 5, 10, 25, or 50 million dollars each over a term of 10, 15, 20, or 30 years, what that principal and interest payment would be, assuming level debt service for those, those project amounts. We also look at when doing an issuance, whether or not you would want to do a bank loan, so it would be placed directly with a bank, or going out to the public market where you would utilize an underwriter to go sell your bonds to investors. There's pros and cons with each, and we do look at, you know, depending on where rates are, what type of the issuance is. A bank loan, you would not need rating agencies to be involved in this. There's no disclosure document required, so that does eliminate some of additional burdens. Also, the cost of issuance is typically lower because you're not paying for the rating agencies, the underwriters, or your disclosure council, and it's typically a shorter timeframe from start to finish when you can get those funds in hand. Public deals are often, if it's a unique credit source that banks may not be comfortable with, 30 years, oftentimes, banks don't go out that far. You don't have to worry about any potential future tax law risk change when it's in the public market, and a typical 10-year par call is standard. The cons for a bank loan is typically, they don't like to go out past 15 years. There are some that are willing, but it's depending on the appetite of the bank at that time as well. So that's, if you're looking out past 15 years, most likely, it would be a public issuance, depending on the size. Some banks, their terms that they propose require different gross-up language in the tax law, and the call provisions may not be as favorable as well. The public, again, you would have to do the rating agency process, which would require the ongoing surveillance with the rating agencies. You would do your disclosure with ongoing reporting to Emma as well for that, and then the, the cost of issuance is typically greater. So slide 12 and 13 are similar to walk through the financing process for all of these. Initially, you would start off with the direction from the commission of what debt you would be interested in issuing, for what projects you would be willing to finance. If it's a bank loan, you would engage your financial advisor, us, and your bond counsel. For a public offering, you would engage your bond counsel, your financial advisor, and disclosure counsel. They would prepare. For a bank loan, we would go through a request for proposal, which PFM often does on behalf of our clients, if purchasing is comfortable with that, where we send it out to over sixty banking institutes in the state to get feedback. Once those responses come back in, we get with county staff and the financing team to go through the terms and conditions and decide which would be the best loan provider. Bond counsel would prepare a bond resolution, bring it to the commission for approval. The county attorney and bond counsel would provide your legal opinions, and then we would do the pre-closing and closing. Normally, it's about two months from start to finish for a bank loan, and on both of these, you have three years, according to IRS spend limits, when you're borrowing for your project fund, for a reasonable expectation that you're going to spend those funds within three years. And so for a public bond deal, much of it is the same. We would bring this back to the county commission. We would have to go through the credit rating agency process as well. We would go out into the public market with an underwriter serving this to do bond pricing, which would lock in the interest rates at that time. Again, the legal opinions are prepared, and then we would do the pre-closing and closing. So that was the initial, and I didn't know if there was any additional questions from the commission.
Thank you. Board, any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you, Erin. We are at I-3.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can we pull that? Back to I-1.
Yes.
That was great information. I appreciate it. I think, for me personally, after the workshop that we had as commissioners, I would like to see staff bring back on our budget and talk about what our mandates are, alternative funding, what our needs are, and have a broader scope, a look at. I mean, we've been talking about paving roads, and we know what that's going to cost. We've been given estimates and other things that we have. And just give us a list of needs, alternative funding mechanisms, what our mandates are, funding the constitutional officers, that type thing, and so that we have a really good, clear picture of what we're paying from advalorem, what we're paying out of enterprise funds, what funds roadways, that type thing.
We can do it.
Did you put in the CIPs in that, too? I mean, I know that'll come to us, but what we have that maybe we could move to a better interest rate is, check that out. I think that's all been done, but...
Yeah, we'll, we'll check and re-verify. We'll take care of it.
Thank you. Is there any other board discussion? Okay, thank you. We can now move on to I-3. We've given clear direction to staff, right, Mr. Howard, for I-1?
Yes.
Okay. So I-3 is a 2:00 PM presentation, which is nine minutes late, for Camp Izzard Boat Ramp, presentation by Chris Nguyen of North Central Regional Director of Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. Hello.
Hello. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having me and us, Fish and Wildlife Commission, have an opportunity to come speak to you about this boat ramp today. I understand that you have not had lunch today, and I'm sorry to hear that. So I'm going to try to be really quick with about four slides, and I think those are, we'll go ahead and start showing those right now.
To make it sadder, or breakfast. How about that?
Yeah, me neither.
So, we, let me start by saying, we partner with the county on many things, many opportunities, and our staff works with your staff. We have a good working relationship. And the essence of this presentation is to recognize that there's no action needed on your part, but rather, we're taking some action on this boat ramp, and we want to stop by, you know, with our good partners in Citrus County, and make sure that you don't have any issues with this action. So we look forward to hearing about any feedback you have. And I'll try to walk through and explain that this is an older boat ramp, if you haven't been there, on the Withlacoochee River, just north of 44. It's known as Camp Izzard Boat Ramp. It's located at the top of this map there, on that blue line, and notably, it's located on private land, 3997 East Riverside Drive. You'll also note on the map that about a mile and a half to the south, there's a much improved Spruce Boat Ramp, and we're looking forward to putting more resources and more energy into that boat ramp as we close down this Camp Izzard Boat Ramp on the north side. So, next slide, you can see an aerial photograph of Camp Izzard Boat Ramp, the private residence there, as well as a picture of the ramp, and that's basically that, all that's there. That's an, it's an older ramp. There's no amenities, there's no ADA accommodations, it's not heavily used, and we do not have funding to ma, continue maintaining this boat ramp. So contrast that with the next slide. This is an aerial photograph of Spruce Boat Ramp, again, to the south on the river, and it is owned by you all, the county, on government land. And as you can see, there's several other amenities that we can zoom in on the next slide and see that there's a much better ramp, there's ADA access, a dock, a fishing pier, ADA handicap parking, there's a picnic shelter, tables, lighting, fencing, and trash pickup. So I'll kind of end by wrapping it up to say that because there is a better boat ramp to the south, Spruce Boat Ramp, we're, we're looking to release an easement that we have for the Camp Izzard Boat Ramp, and we'd like to take any feedback that you have, or, and I'd be happy to carry that back to the agency as we move forward with, probably within the next 30 days, releasing the easement on the Camp Izzard Boat Ramp. And I'll end by saying, I think the private landowners are here, the Sniders. I'm sure they would love to say a few words if, if you all would allow them to do that, but let me know if y'all have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I will, I'll chime in and just say that you've changed my mind on this. I was coming in today, to today's meeting, to, to voice my opposition to giving up this boat ramp, because I do think it's, it's important that the county maintain as much public access to our waters as we possibly can, but I do understand limited resources as well. And if you're, you're here telling us today that, that the agency does not have the financial resources to maintain both of these ramps, and you're putting, you're putting the resources into the Spruce Boat Ramp, then I, I, I don't have anything negative to say about that. So I'm on board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Davis?
I had a similar feeling as Commissioner Kennard, because I understand we have an AR on the books where we're not actually supposed to relinquish any access to the water. I'm also tend to think in terms of decades rather than years, so I wonder if we're not going to want that in the future with, as the county grows and the neighboring counties grow. That being said, I'm inclined to say the same as Commissioner Kennard, that if, you know, funding sources are limited and you only want to support one ramp, then obviously the other one is the clear winner because it's government-owned land already, and et cetera, et cetera. So we'll see whatever the rest of the commissioners think.
Commissioner Bays or Finnegan, you have anything to say?
Could you just?
Commissioner Finnegan?
Could you just tell me how far one is from the other again?
About a mile and a half.
A mile and a half.
And Madam Chair, I would like to say that I did actually drive by it. I don't know if any of the other commissioners did.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I believe that the other boat ramp is a county boat ramp.
and we have an interlocal with FWC, where FWC maintains the boat ramp, Camp Isard, and we maintain some litter pickup and so on, so forth. Do we have an interlocal agreement with you that you're going to provide funding to the other boat ramp, or that's just completely funded by the county?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We do have an agreement for the Spruce Boat Ramp and would look to continue that agreement and discontinue our agreement with you all on Camp Isard Boat Ramp as we move to release that easement. And if I may point out that we had similar concerns, which is one of the reasons that we said, hey, we want to come check in with the county before we do this. I feel better after talking with our staff and thinking about the big picture, thinking long-term. And I'll offer you this, that if the county ever wants to pursue new access at some point, we hold dearly the fact that we need to provide access for the public. And there's lots of other public land along the river that we could probably explore a boating improvement grant, you know, funding through our agency. And we would invite you to... We'd love to work with your staff to explore additional access, you know, in the future on government-owned, you know, land that's not as complicated as the situation here, you know, on private land.
Do you have anything?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I love what you just offered out. So, if that, then, Madam Attorney, if they could put that in writing, that would give me great comfort, that they would be willing to explore other avenues to grant fund public access in lieu of relinquishing this boat ramp.
Okay, and I'm not quite there. And the reason being is, this is an easement, and you said it was private property. But since 1962, this has been an easement that we've had an agreement with this, you know, for this boat ramp. You've been maintaining it. We've been doing the litter. How is it now gone from an easement to private property?
Yes, Madam Chair, it was always private property. And the private landowner back in nineteen...
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two gave us the Game of Fish Commission an easement to construct and maintain a public ramp for public use. Those words are in the easement. That caught my eye as well, because I was thinking long-term, maybe we would need some sort of special law enforcement access, if you will. But that, I don't think that would be allowed per the wording in the easement. It needs to be open to the public. And over the years, the private landowner has changed. You know, the property's been sold two or three times. And the landowners that have it today definitely have some liability concerns with people accessing their property, the public, to use this public boat ramp. So, it is a complicated situation. It's not as clean, if that's a good way to describe the Spruce Boat Ramp. It's owned by the county and managed, you know, through cooperation with FWC. And again, we have it in writing all over our website that we're happy to work with the county, any county, to explore additional boating access launch sites, you know? And we've got a bit over $2 million that goes out every year in grant funding to counties and local municipalities. And we'd be happy to talk to you about the needs along the river. And I'm sure, I've heard through the rumor mill, that there's also additional needs on the coast, right? Barge Canal, whatnot, some Crystal River needs, you know? So we have to take all that into account. But happy to speak with staff about future needs on the river.
I would like to hear from our county attorney about this, because I'm kind of on the fence with it. I think you have a consensus on... I might be on the losing end of it, but I want to make sure I do this properly. What is your thoughts on this, Madam Attorney?
Well, it's a policy decision of the board. And, you know, FWC is the benefactor, if you will, of the easement. The property has been this way since 1962. The neighbors next door are the individuals who bought it, and they've owned their property since 2002, and they just closed on this recently. So, you know, it's up to y'all whether you... I think they paid like $32,000 for this lot on the Withlacoochee River. I don't know what it costs to buy other property along the Withlacoochee River to now install a boat ramp. But those are things that y'all, you know, can consider. It is FWC's easement, so they can certainly give it up without you. I think the idea was to bring it before the board to get the board's thoughts on what the board felt about public access to the river.
Well, I think whoever was the... Bought this property got a pretty darn good deal on the Withlacoochee, but I do understand the having people come on your property. And so, Board, what is your discretion on this? What would you like to do?
Madam Chair, I would... I believe they've... FWC has made the case for a lot... Just, they don't... As the attorney said, they don't need our permission to proceed, but just for the board to be in agreement with their decision. If they believe this is the right way to go, then I think we're on board with that. And certainly, at a future date, if we decided that we needed additional public access along the river, as you said, there's a lot of public land there. And it wouldn't necessarily involve the county going out and purchasing waterfront property, but rather entering into, you know, long-term lease with the state, that type of thing, and then constructing cooperative, cooperatively funding a boat ramp as needed for additional access. So, I would suggest that the board just agree with their decision to move forward with giving up that easement.
Thank you. And I... Mr. Nguyen?
Yes, ma'am.
I did like the idea of Commissioner Bays doing something in writing. Do you feel comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good.
I'd be happy to... Maybe a follow-up email to your county administrator expressing our willingness to work with the county to identify potential boating access opportunities.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, this was just to give direction to staff. So is there anything further? Staff have clear direction? Okay. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And congratulations. I don't know who the people are, but congratulations. Oh, congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Now, I'm going to open it to the public. Ask if anybody wishes to address the board at this time. Please step forward, fill out a card, and you can have three minutes to speak. Give us your name and where you live. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time, open to the public?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Madam Chair. I'm here to ask what the status is on a workshop that we're going to be having for the MSBU of Inverness Village Four. I understand that the staff, along with Commissioner Davis, Ms. Lynn also has been invited, as well as Mr. Howard. And I just want to know the timeframe on that, because we do have individuals who are here, you know, the snowbirds. And so, we're trying to get a lot of people involved in this. And I just wanted an update, if anyone can respond to that. I also have concerns, and I know that there have been various individuals going out into the community with violations that are going on. And I wanted to see what the status says on that as well. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I'm Dr. Carmen Kubitschek, I forgot to say, but you all know who I am.
We all know you. I'm sorry. Thank you, doctor. And she lives in Inverness. Anyone else would like to speak at this time, open to the public? Going once, going twice? Okay. Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Like to address, doctor?
We've had two meetings between staff and Inverness Villages Four, sort of a leadership, ad hoc leadership group from IV Four. The only thing I'm aware of is we have an internal staff meeting this Friday afternoon. And then, in terms of code violations, the big issue, I think it was brought up at our meeting, the code violations actually stop all permitting happening, which should get their attention. So it's not actually the cost of the code violation itself, the fee. It is the fact that all work stops, which costs builders a lot of money. So hopefully, they'll get their attention, at least on the intermediate, you know? They're smaller. It's not the bigger issue at hand, but at least that part is getting taken care of. So... And Maricel, are you aware of any workshop in the works?
Not at the moment. But we do have our internal meeting on Friday, so we'll have some more follow-up after that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We heard you.
Commissioners, does anybody else like to address our one open to the public? Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I've got a question about stopping all permitting. So if a house, a home is under construction there, we're not permitting them to go any further with the construction process? Or we're not allowing the trades to continue, or what's happening there?
So, as long as they're not in compliance with our codes and they've been found in violation, then there's no subsequent permits. There's no, you know, electrical permit, everything. All the... Excuse me, the inspections are not happening. I'm using the wrong terminology. The inspections are not happening, so it's a work stop, basically.
All right. I guess, and I understand the desire to, or the need to get that area cleaned up. But I can tell you, if I were the homeowner, I would be livid at the county, while that blame may not necessarily be warranted. Those homeowners are sitting on a construction loan that they're continuing to pay, and their house isn't making any progress, which you know the blame's going to be turned on the county. Oh, the county won't come out and inspect it, so keep paying your construction loan.
Send them to me. I'll take the heat. I am so deeply buried in this issue. And mind you, Commissioner Kennard, the code violations are not that hard to fix. It's silt fence. It's containing their trash. I mean, they've got trash blowing around. They have earth moving with wind and... Well, not water right now, with the silt fencing. And we're running into rainy season, so we had to get their attention to at least keep a clean work site, to not make the big problem much worse.
Understood. All right.
Mr. Howard, would you mind if the Director of Growth Management addressed some of this?
Please come forward.
Eric Landon.
Hi. Good afternoon.
How are you? Be happy to answer any questions, but Commissioner Davis is correct. So, the builder was given one week's notice that the building department was going to come inspect, looking for trash and erosion and sedimentation control. They went out there. They found numerous violations. They notified the builder that they were in violation, which comes with a small fine. But the big catch is that inspections would be suspended until it was cleaned up.
Thank you.
May I say one other thing?
Commissioner Davis.
They had a week's notice, and they still ignored us.
And what?
They ignored us. They had a week's notice to clean up their job sites, and they didn't do it.
Yeah, I don't know how much pain the builder's going to feel from this, but the homeowner building the homes will feel the pain for sure.
Why would they not be feeling pain if all inspections have stopped? They're not getting subsequent payments.
They're not paying out any money either. I mean, they've already taken... Depending on where they're at in the process, they've already taken their first several draws. So, they're not incurring any additional expense. They're not getting any additional revenue. But the would-be homeowner continues to pay every month on that construction loan. So if it sits there for the next six months, that homeowner's going to be paying every month on that construction loan. So, I'm not... I don't mean to come across as being critical of it. I understand it's a very, very challenging issue, because quite frankly, it sounds like we've got a builder who just doesn't care, developer doesn't care. So I would like to see, I would like to see a way that we could make it more painful on the developer, and less so on the would-be homeowner, if there's a way to do that. I don't know.
I would say technically, he's not a developer. He's a builder. And he's not treating our community, nor the citizens who buy there, very well. And I have been beating my head against a wall. Staff will tell you that I've been asking over and over and over, not in a very cheerful way, shall we say. I'm not, you know, I'm not angry, but I'm not cheerful either, saying, can we please find some way to shut this down? Because it's... I have driven through there several times. And the fact that someone has, you know, people have to have sandbags around their property tells you right there that it's not a developer. He plunked houses down, including in low areas where the DRA's need to go. And it's just an obscene process. You know, everything about this is obscene. And I'm going to keep fighting until we get this figured out. And the staff meeting on Friday, hopefully, we'll be able to... We have some ideas, more ideas. And sorry, Madam Attorney, but we keep running into the law. It's an impediment, but... Yeah, so, stay tuned.
I think I applaud what you're doing and taking this on, because this has been going on a very long time. This board, very new board, has inherited this problem. You know, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Kennard, and I am also in construction. And, you know, there are proper procedures to pulling a permit, and everything has been circumvented and going around. And this might get the message to potential buyers in your neighborhood. And unfortunately, it's... There might be some cases where the homeowner is carrying the construction loan. But normally, the builder or developer would build the home, and then they would sell the home. And they've found a way to get through the system, and the system has to figure out a way to get to him. So I think this is the closest you have come, we've come. And I know it's a Band-Aid, but this is what we have.
I was going to save this for Friday, but I did have a very quick off-the-cuff discussion with one of my fellow commissioners on the medical examiner board, who said that they had a whole swath of their land get designated that it had to be no more than one house per ten acres, or five acre... I think it was five acres. And so, someone who had nine acres sold a four-acre parcel to someone that didn't do, wasn't aware of what was going on. And then, all of a sudden, they've got a worthless piece of land. They can't build a house on it. So the way they got around the unscrupulous land dealers in that area was that they went, worked with the property appraiser to have a big notice recorded on the deed that said essentially what the limitation was. And he brought that up after I was essentially crying on his shoulder about this situation. And he said, you could put something on the deeds that say, roads are not paved and county's not paving them. Or something, some big notice warning which would stop whenever people are getting mortgages and whatnot in the title search, that that will show up on the deed. So that's something to look into, because the more... If we can possibly bring him to the table to fix this, because that's where it's going to hurt the land sales, big time, for future. Just a thought.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, so... We have finished with open to the public. We are now at E Regular Business, 235. Board, do you want to take the bids in their entirety? Board, are, do you wanna take the bids in their entirety, or approve them individually?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve item E one, A through E.
Second. And a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Bays for E one A through E one E. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes five zero. Thank you. E two, budget transfers.
Motion to approve item E two.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment regarding E two budget transfers for solid waste housing community centers? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five zero. E three, budget, budget resolutions. Adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution, amending, adopting, estate housing initiative partnership, the ship grants. Looking for a motion for E three.
Motion to approve E three.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan, and second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E three? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five zero. E four, water resources. Prove and authorize the chairman to accept a new temporary construction easement. And we have A, B, C, and D for E four.
Motion to approve E four, A, B, C, and D.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Second by Commissioner Kennard.
Chair, is that E as well?
I don't have an E on my printed one.
I don't either. I have to D. E four, A through D.
You're correct, sorry.
Thank you. Is there any further, did I put it out for public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five zero. E five, amendment to upgrade the Brantwood WWTF.
Motion to approve E five.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard. And second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Okay, any further board comment? Like to say, is this part of the? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. E six, addendum to purchase and sales, purchase and sale agreement for Sanderson Henninger Enterprise LLC.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E six.
A motion by Commissioner Davis, looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Finnegan, thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. E seven, this is the MFAAA Elder Options O, OAA Grant Application for Funding Years Twenty Four Through Twenty Six. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve E seven.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Bays. Any public comment? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five zero. E eight, county wide, county wide stormwater utility operations management and assessment proposal letter.
Motion to approve E eight.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennard, thank you, Commissioner Finnegan, for your second. Is there any public comment on E eight? Is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five zero. E nine, this is an amendment to collective bargaining agreement, local four, five, six, two professional firefighters of Citrus County. I have A, B, and C, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the amendment to collective bargaining agreement.
Madam Chair, move, motion to approve E nine, A, B, and C.
Thank you. I heard Commissioner Bays made the motion, Commissioner Davis said this, made second. Is there any public comment? Why are you recording me? Okay. Is there any further board comment on this? I'm glad to see this resolved, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, E ten, amendment to collective bargaining agreement again for four, five, six, two professional firefighters of Citrus County. This is for rank and file firefighters. The previous one was supervisors, I forgot to say that, A, B, and C. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve E ten, A, B, and C.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Davis, looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Finnegan, thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. And E eleven is the fire rescue fee schedule. I'm looking for a motion for E eleven.
Motion to approve E eleven.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five zero. E twelve, fiscal year twenty-two staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant program. This is to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute, execute a resolution authorizing an application for funding to the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Two, Staffing for Adequate, Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program. And B is approve and authorize the chairman to execute the designation of signatory authority.
Madam Chair, move approval of E twelve, A and B, and I wanna just go on record to say that I'm very grateful for our fire chief Craig Stevens and his great work to find a grant. This would be thirteen positions that will be grant funded for three years, I believe. And as we are a growing county and the need for these services, this is a great way to ascertain them. So very appreciative of your work. Thank you for applying for the grant.
I need a second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on this grant? Okay, any board comment, Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna support this. The, right now, it's my understanding that, that we are fully staffed at, at two men per crew. And there's an understanding that we will go to three men once the money's available. The money's not available. We don't have the money to hire thirteen, thirteen new firefighters right now. I understand that the safer grants provide a hundred percent funding the first year and some degree funding for a couple, three years after that, whatever it might be. Bottom line is that hiring them now, we don't have the money to pay them in the future. We might have with future development. If the economy continues to grow, if our tax base continues to grow, then we may have the money to pay these firefighters. But it's a hundred percent on us in either year three or four, I'm not sure which one. And I, I'm not, I, I don't wanna spend money that we don't have. We don't have the money to hire them now. Just because we get them for free the first year should not be, should not be incentive to, to spend that money that's, that's, that, that we don't have. And right now, we, we've got, we've got the crews all addressed or fully funded at, at two men per crew. And right now, we just, we can't afford to take care of our roads, we can't afford to take care of the infrastructure needs in the community. And we certainly don't have the money to go to three man crews at this point. So I have the utmost respect for Chief Stevens and the job that he's doing there. And of course, I support our, our firefighters, our first, all of our first responders, but I can't support this agenda item.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Commissioner Kennard brings up some good points that I wasn't aware of, and I didn't know if, if Mr. Howard or Chief Stevens had a plan, if there was more grants to come, or if reallocation of employees, if we couldn't fund. I don't know if someone can speak to that.
I'll have Chief Stevens come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, so, you know, we're, we're trying to prepare for the growth. As you guys know, we have a lot of people coming to Citrus County. And something that I think that we're going to do this year with your approval, of course, is to seek, you know, assessment of, of the taxes, to have the consultant come in and look at the MSBU and make sure that that is the appropriate charge for the MSBU fees. The last time that the study was done was back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. We think with the potential growth, and then of course, their reassessment of the fees come year four, hopefully the funding will be there.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bays? So as I understand it, this funds these thirteen firefighters for three years.
Yes, ma'am.
And at the three, at the end of the three years, we're under no obligation to keep them.
The, the grant does not require you to keep them, it used to. Right now, it does not. However, we, again, we feel that the future funding, with the growth that we have coming to Citrus County, and again, with the MSBU being so old that the study was done, we need that study done again. And commercial growth, I think, I think will be okay, but that's your decision to make.
Madam Chair, well, I'm gonna stand by what I said. I, I, I mean, we just went through some negotiations with the unions. We know that it's coming, whether, we can reevaluate this in year three, but we know that to get people on, to train them, to have the proper staffing, we know that every year these unions are gonna keep poking at us a little bit. And it, you know, at, at the end of year three, if we don't have the money and we haven't taken a corrective action, but I've lived through this, from in two thousand twelve when we actually created this, we were running in the negative. We had a great cry from the public. I know that we have other needs in our county as well, from the consumer standpoint, our ISO ratings for fire stations. This will help productivity time to get out on the response calls. It changes the dynamics of how you respond. Hopefully, this will help some of those ISO ratings at the consumer level, because we actually have some areas of our county that are nines and tens that just literally, we can't, we don't have companies that will provide insurance. And if they do, it is so extraordinarily expensive that it's, if some of the older generation, they have their homes paid off, they're going without insurance just for that issue. So I'm gonna stand by my, my motion to approve this. I think it's a good thing, and it's, we have to continue to address these issues just as we have to contend, continue to address the issues with the Sheriff's Department. So this just goes down to one of the things that I believe in the county we are totally responsible for, is the public safety. So I'm gonna stand by my motion.
Thank you. Chief, this grant, and, you know, I commend you for bringing it forward again. You've brought this, tried to get this through for many years. You're not guaranteed you get, you will get this grant. Do you know the return on, I mean, how many?
So you have to basically justify your reason for seeking the grant. And, and I'll give you a great example, Citrus County, you know, the, the recommended or the national average of the firefighter to one thousand population is one point five. One point five firefighters per thousand population. And right now, we have eighty-five firefighters. Eighty-five firefighters, the last census of a hundred fifty-eight thousand people in Citrus County, you're sitting at point five-three firefighters per thousand population. So we're well below that number. The other aspect that they look at, which is NFPA standards, the NFPA standard that they're looking at is seventeen-ten, which relates to you getting an effective firefighting force on a structured fire. Currently, you know, with us dispatching our first alarm to a structured fire, we arrive with fourteen people. That includes your battalion chief, your safety officer, and then all the trucks there. When you do that, you deplete half of the current service that you have, half of the trucks. So you have five of your stations, your battalion chief, and your safety officer there, leaving the other half to cover the entire county for other calls. God forbid, if another structured fire comes out, then of course, they're all gonna be busy. So what, what the, they're looking at is to make sure that you get, technically, they want sixteen people on the scene of that structured fire for seventeen-ten, okay? And that's for residential structured fire. If we talk about a commercial structured fire, they're looking to make sure that you have twenty-seven firefighters. We don't even have twenty-seven personnel on duty right now. That's the problem. So we're trying to address these issues, you know, a lot of this stuff I have never been able to address. And I, I think not only do we have to look at that, but we have to look at future funding for the fire service, because we're an ongoing service that has to grow with the community. Meaning, you know, we have to start building fire stations eventually, too. And right now, you have fire stations that are forty-five years old. And we, we've renovated them the best we can, but we're getting to a point, you know, the location of the fire stations, are they in the best location for the ISO rating? Not all of them, we just identified one today, the one in particular that we've been discussing. And if we relocate that fire station to a different location, we could potentially save twenty thousand homeowners their ISO ratings. So there's a lot of things that, you know, no different than the sheriff, we have to continue to grow with the growth. And it's hard, because I know you guys have really hard decisions to make, and you have to spend your money, spend the taxpayers' money wisely.
My second part of this question is, it would be, if you've got the grant, we would have out of pocket of a hundred and eight thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Correct.
Does this grant cover overtime?
It covers their regular overtime. Meaning, so our firefighters work a one-twenty, a one-twenty, and a ninety-six. So that's three pay periods. So those one-twenty's, they have fourteen hours of overtime each pay period. That's just built in overtime. So it covers that overtime. Now, if they pick up an extra shift, then no, it does not cover that overtime. That would be us picking it up in the budget, but if you're having a mandatory position anyways, you're gonna have to cover it. Meaning, we would, we would arrange for that in the budget.
Okay. Okay, is there any, Commissioner? Okay, Commissioner Finnegan? Did you have something? I thought she was first. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
You've heard a pretty sympathetic ear from me the last couple of years on trying to, to, I look at both the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department as when the rubber meets the road, I mean, it's all fun and games until something really bad happens, right? So if you look at what best practices are, and I'm glad you did the point five-three per thousand math for us, great. The sheriff had a similar situation where, but we are coming out of being a rural county. We don't have skyscrapers, we don't have a lot of the stuff that the more populated counties have. So I'm okay being low.
Right.
But this is really low. So it seems not adequate. And I very much appreciate Commissioner Bays' experience in the insurance world to be able to highlight what the ISO ratings are doing to some of our citizens. And so ultimately, even though I am, I absolutely, we do have a lot of very difficult decisions to make. Commissioner Kennard brought up roads, et cetera. The fact that we don't have to continue after three years with these thirteen firefighters, if the financial world falls in on us, then that makes it. if the financial world falls in on us, then that makes it an easy yes for me. Obviously, I believe with the growth figures, additional tax base, everything else, as stated, I don't think, I think in three years, it's gonna be no big deal. So I'm gonna support it.
Thank you.
Are you done?
I am.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, will they be single certification or dual?
Dual certification.
Oh, that's nice. I love grant money. I do.
I could get behind this, but I would hope that you, you know, for the 13 that you would hire, if, if you are awarded, that they would know that they're grant-funded. And I don't know when the start date is, but I would assume by the time you're thinking ahead to start your budget at the end of those years, and if you saw that the economy wasn't good or something happened, I mean, we can't predict that, right? You say we're growing, we might be able to cover this. Um, that you would just, as you had vacancies, not fill them, and then slide your 13 into that position. Yeah, we can't predict the future, but I, I see this as something good for you. And like you said, we're not obligated to keep them, but I'd hate for anyone to lose their job. But I think, um, and I've hired grant people before. You, you just have to let them know upfront. When it's new or unstable funding, I'm just always very honest with them about that. And then obviously, if there's a spot open that's not grant-funded, I'd hope you'd slide them into those positions.
Yes, ma'am. Any position that we fund with grant funding, we have to advertise it as such, per county policy.
Fantastic.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, Chief, adding these, adding these 13 positions to the existing firehouses, will that lower our ISO reading?
Potentially, it will bring our numbers down in the Fire Department category. So, uh, the way that ISO grades is you have 40, 40% of your rating is based on the water utilities. So that's a big chunk of it. And then the other 50% is rated on the Fire Department. And they do have a classification for the number of personnel. Um, if you give me a second, I'll get you the number that we're currently at.
No, no, that's, that's all right. That was, that was my question. Uh, because, uh, Commissioner Bayes brought up, brought up a great point. ISO reading is very much a concern in, uh, several parts of the county, um, because of so many stations that were shut down. Uh, my concern is, uh, we still need to build a, a fire station, uh, in the near future at Cardinal, and I believe probably up in the northwest part of the county. And we're adding, it looks to me, quite frankly, like we're adding personnel to existing firehouses. Uh, we've got roughly eight weeks before we dive into the budget. And I think going into the budget season, uh, already deficit spending is not a good way to approach this. Uh, we're gonna have a very challenging time, um, figuring out how we're going to pay for all these projects, uh, that are in the pipeline. This is going to get very, very expensive. And once we hire these 13 firefighters, I'm not suggesting they should, but they're not going anywhere. What we're doing is laying it, laying the expense of this on the future board. So I'll le, I'll leave it at that. Uh, uh, obviously, I'm, I'm outnumbered here, but, uh, I just, it's not that I don't support our fire services, but I just cannot support the deficit spending when it's not absolutely essential right now. Uh, we should be keeping a very, very tight hold on the county pocketbook.
Commissioner Davis?
What's your average turnover rate in three years?
On the fire side?
Mm-hmm.
I would have to get you those numbers from, from HR, but on the fire side, it's pretty limited. We're, um, I would say we probably lose maybe three personnel a year, four.
So that's nine?
Yeah.
Okay. So between that and growth, I, I'm failing to see why this is not a fiscally prudent decision to boot, to move forward. Because also, to Commissioner Finnegan's point, you don't wanna see people lose their jobs, right?
Yes.
But through normal attrition, you just don't rehire. If it looks like our growth numbers aren't good, if the economy falls apart, knock wood, does not, um, then, you know, all of this will sort itself out. We're gonna know well in advance.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am. Commissioner Finnegan?
I just wanted to point out something that Commissioner Davis said, because when you're asking about, um, the turnover, but you, he did mention they're dual certified. So I guess if there's somewhat turnover on the EMS side...
We could put them on the EMS side if we had to. Correct.
That, that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable, because there's sort of a feel safe there.
There, there's also some things that we can do on the EMS side that we're looking into budgetarily to try to help resolve some things. Because the majority of what firefighters do is EMS stuff.
Right.
So we're working with some surrounding counties to see how they, which we may, kind of make things a little bit easier for us in the budget process. We just have to make sure that it's legal.
Um, I, I just wanna tell you, this, you just really made me angry because...
Sorry.
Because I know how important you guys are and to our public safety. But my first thought is, we've got 800 staff members that we have to figure out how to get them up to the correct pay. And that is paramount for me. And even just $100,000, that's, that's, that's quite a few pay increases for staff that is really loyal and working for next to nothing. So you've really pulled me, because I understand the grant money, but there is overtime. There's, there will always be expenses. And I do not want to go into this new budget with a deficit already. And, um, so unfortunately, I, I, I'm probably on the losing end, but I just don't think I can support it today. If we could've gotten through the pay study and done that, then perhaps. But, um, today, I would have to say, I just don't like the what-ifs. I mean, you, you, you might not even get the grant and, and I could vote for it. You might not even get it, but I don't feel comfortable until I get the employees that have been getting crumbs, and, and your group is part of that for a long time, um, up to a, a good quality of life and pay. So, um, gosh, I'm sorry. I, I just, I have to...
Madam Chair, let me take one more stab at this, and hopefully I can convince you. We did a po, uh, population census that it was underestimated. They redid it, came back, came at, back at about 158,000 roughly. Everybody will tell you that that, that census is still probably woefully off. We can drive up and down our highways today and see the congestion when the snowbirds come back. Um, I would probably estimate that our population, when snowbirds are back, to be probably closer to 168, 170. I would further demonstrate the need, um, to support this based on this last evacuation that we had for the hurricane that came from the south. Um, we know, and, and I've asked for an origin destination study to emphasize, uh, what traffic is coming on the Suncoast Parkway. We know that there are a lot of people that are using that Parkway. And for whatever reason you want to categorize it in, they're ending up in our county, which further demonstrates the need. It is not just about our population. It is about the extenuating circumstances that are coming from outside of our county. Most of our shelter was filled with people that were not from our county. So, you know, they are in line of the first responders. And, you know, the, the need to be able to be prepared in an emergency, um, when these, these 13 people are not gonna cost us anything for three years other than that $108,000, and you're going to pay overtime regardless, uh, whether it's these people or somebody else. That, that, that point is negated, in my opinion. But we have got, we are charged. That is one of our primary duties, is to provide public safety, whether it's for our citizens or anybody traveling through our county. And I find this is to be one of the things that I... I would be very disappointed in this board if you fail to not approve this, knowing that it's one of our primary duties that we have under our purview and our obligation. We take our, funding our sheriff very serious. I think this group of individuals is very serious as well.
Well, I hope I don't disappoint you.
I hope you don't either.
But I'm probably going to. Um, anybody else? Any further comments? I did see that you did amend it, that the county administrator would be the, um, signatory a, authority.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that would, I think that's a good way to keep the county in the loop. Otherwise, it would just be strictly with you. So, um, I understand everything, but I, I, I keep coming back to our, our pay study. And is the, Mr. Howard, in that pay study, are the firefighters part of that pay, pay study?
I think they're standalone. They're not, but there's some other caveat to it.
The non-bargaining unit members are part of that pay study. The bargaining unit members are not. Meaning the union personnel are not part of that, but the non-union personnel are part of that pay study. That was a decision done, uh, in the past.
So you have quite a few employees that are not union that will be...
Uh, we have maybe 25?
Okay. Okay.
Can I, can I add a couple of things? And I, and I just wanna talk about safety. And, and I wanna try to, you know, make you understand from my point of view, um, you know, why I stay up at night and I don't get a lot of sleep. And, uh, we respond to a structured fire. And let's say we have a two-person engine that responds to that structured fire. They arrive at that structured fire, and there's fire coming out of the house. It's 1 o'clock in the morning. You see a dog running in the front yard. Thankfully, the dog got out of the house. But we don't know if the family got out. So that means we're going in that house. That means we're going in that house with those two firefighters on that truck. Right? Those two firefighters are going in that house. And that engine out there is running by itself, hoping to God that we don't have a mechanical or a electrical failure on that truck for that pump. Nobody's outside watching them until that second arriving crew that gets there. And we're, we're pulling the stats to give you numbers, but, you know, I would say from my experience, you know, your second arriving truck could be anywhere from five to 12 minutes, depending on where they're at in the county. So I want you to think about that, because I do. I think about it every night, that we go to a structured fire and remind yourself that we respond to a structured fire about every third day in this county. We run over 100 structured fires a year. And my job is very important to keep the, the men and women of the fire service safe, just like the sheriff's job is to keep the deputies safe. And I wanna try to do my best to do that. And I know, again, I know you guys have a hard job to do.
Well, thank you. And that was a very good argument, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, um... That being said...
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I hate doing this, 'cause I have just a tremendous amount of respect for Chief Stevens. Um, but the scenario that he just described is the situation that we're in with two, two men per unit. Um, and not 20 minutes earlier, we just approved two items in our agenda that, um, both captains and the lieutenants, as well as the rank and file, all agreed that we would add a third person to those crews when money becomes available. So if this board thinks that money's available, then we should approve this and go to three-man crews. The money's not available, and there's gonna be less money available when we get to October 2nd of this year. 'Cause when we go through this budget season and the next budget season, it is going to be brutal to try and fund all of the needs and a handful of the wants, uh, and keep the millage rate where it's at. Um, and the board, I don't think, needs a reminder that we are quickly approaching our cap on millage rate. So some of this stuff is gonna have to go away. We can't keep spending money that we don't have, and we do not have this money.
Okay. Have we opened this to the public?
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to, uh, make a public comment on E12? Thank you. Fill out a green card and give us your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Chris Caravetto, and I am a citizen of Inverness. I've been a firefighter in the county for five years, 10 years in, in Marion County. I appreciate your time. Um, thi, this is a lot. Um, as a, as a union guy, um, union leadership, I look at my friends up here. I've run these calls. And to hear a commissioner talk about two people and, um... You're okay with this? Like, you're okay with two people coming off that truck?
Chris, you have to direct it to me.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Apparently, they were okay with it, too, because they signed off on it.
So please direct your comments.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All right, I'll get my composure. So ju, just like recently, we had this fire in Black Diamond. We had two people get off the truck. We're running around this, uh, we're running around this golf course. We're doing all this stuff. I turn around, and there's my fire chief with a hose in his hand, packing my truck, because there's not enough people there, you know? I don't know where the money's gonna come from, and we have gone down this road. Many of my, um, colleagues have, have put this contract together, and we have gone over and over, because the money says, or we all agree that when the money's available, there, that there will be three people on a truck. There's videos of you got, the previous board, I, I mean, right here, and the fire chief was explaining stuff, and everybody agreed, "We gotta have three. We gotta have three." I think Commissioner Coleman was one of them. And, and, uh, that's what it was. Taxes were raised based on three firefighters going on a truck. People, comments were here. Three people, three people. And it never happened. So we, I, I really don't know what to say. We're, we're a little disappointed in some of your excuses, you might say. I don't know. We gotta find a way, just like, just like with the cops, just like everybody else. I'm not saying that this is the answer.
Thank you. And I, I, I do wanna correct you and be very careful. These are not excuses. These are concerns.
I know.
And we, I am concerned about every employee that works for the B O C C. And there are a lot of people that we have been neglecting and neglecting and neglecting. And so just keep that in mind. This is not something that is, uh, just a flippant, but, uh, decision. So, um, I appreciate your comments, but just know that. This is, this is a concern. And, uh, it's easy to, you know, say, yes, this make, this is logical, but then you've got, you know, we, we're gonna have to raise the millage. And like Mr. Kennard said, we're very close. And, and, you know, Randy Oliver was a genius in finances. And he said, "If you wanna pay the pay study, you're gonna have to raise it a half a mil." And I'm prepared to do that. Mark my words, because that's how important you, you all sitting out here, not you, but all of you sitting out here.
Except you and your...
Yeah, except for you and you. Um, because you, you are important. And, and, and you, you might not be putting out a fire, but you are important. You're, so this is very difficult. And, um, is there anybody else that would like to make a comment about this? Okay, that being said, any, any, any additional board comments? Commissioner Bayes?
So we have an MSBU for fire, correct?
Yes.
It's currently at 100 max. It's, it's ma, it's, that is the maximum that you can assess under the current study. That's why the ch...
And it is maxed out?
No, no.
No, no. But the chief was saying that he wants, he, he believes it would be important to have that study updated to see if it would go above.
And, um, so again, this is a grant that would fund these positions for three years with no obligation of the county to keep them on. Is that an accurate statement?
That's what we're being, that's what we're being told. Is that correct, Chief Stevens?
So where, for the $108,000 for the uniforms, could that be paid under the MSBU? Yes. So it's not coming out of ad valorem?
Yes, so it's not coming out of Ad Valorm, it's coming out of the MSBU.
Come out of our budget, but yes, between the MSBU and the Ad Valorm, we should be able to afford that in this coming year's budget.
So again, I mean, we're back to talking about natural nutrition, we have three years under a grant to to employ these people. We have an MSBU that funds this service. And we're under no obligation to keep these thirteen individuals.
Correct.
At the end of the three years.
Mr. Howard, um when, when can we look at the MSBU and the exemptions that are given in the county? I mean, if you're, it, I know there's a lot of exemptions, I'm not gonna put it out there cuz people be emailing me like crazy. But if there's a building on fire, you're gonna go whether they pay the tax or not. Um, when can we look at that?
I think one of the items on the agenda for you to approve is actually to go forward on uh something similar to that study, so we'll get that timetable.
Would that be something that we could look at, is that, is that ship sailed? Um for the cer- for certain categories that are exempt?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the particulars of how, when you can implement it, but we will look at all those.
I would think that the important part would be for us to do the study, we'd be able to identify what is the current exemptions. What do you wanna continue to be exempt in the MSBU and make sure that our MSBU fee is within our, our reason.
Madam Attorney, do you have anything on my question?
I was gonna say real quick, I think there's, there's two parallel tracks, I'm trying to correct myself, but one is what Aaron's doing, but also there's standalone that that fires looking at as well, so there's actually two kinda parallel studies, I think one of the studies he was wanting to actually put in this, this budget that's some ongoing, that will come forward soon, so just wanna clarify my comments.
Ms. Lynn?
I I think what we're talking, on this agenda, we've got the, uh it hasn't been decided yet, but to request Neighbors Giblin do the alternative revenue sources. I think that might be what Steve's talk, what Steve's talking about, that's just a general alternative revenue sources, that's not looking at the fire MSBU. We also have the stormwater MSBU to retain Neighbors Giblin is also on this agenda, uh but that's strictly related to the stormwater. Um what Craig is talking about is actually having, engaging a consultant to go out and actually look at the the fee itself and to make a determination whether it's fair where it is or whether it, whether today um that that maximum needs to be increased, so um that's when you would look at those exemptions, once the study is done, the study is gonna be done as a whole and then the board would have an opportunity to determine from that whole whether it wanted to reduce the amount of money. And remember, when you have any type of exemption from an MSBU, that has to be funded from the general fund because um you can't exempt some, you can't accept somebody from uh the MSBU and then not fund it from the general fund.
Very good, Mr. Kennard?
Yeah, the, this grant, it funds the thirteen positions at a hundred percent for the first year. Can you tell me what that funding percentage is in subsequent years?
Yeah, it's, it's actually a hundred percent for three years.
Hundred percent for three years, okay.
Correct.
Commissioner Finnegan, any final thoughts? Commissioner Davis? Okay, thank you, sir. So at this time, I'm gonna, I have a motion by Commissioner Bayes, a second by Commissioner Finnegan and any final words before we take this vote? Okay, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That passes four-one, thank you. E thirteen. Release of retainage, A, B, and C. Accept the completed project, approve the release of retainage and authorize a clerk to release the retainage. Um and return any encumbered funds back to the appropriate counts.
Motion to approve E thirteen, A and B and C.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, I heard Commissioner Finnegan first, is there any public comment on E thirteen? Seeing none, all, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, passes five-zero. E fourteen, approve purchase of census water meters.
Motion to approve E fourteen, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment on E fourteen? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, thank you, E fifteen. This is the Florida Development Finance Corp inter-local agreement. A, approve and authorize the chairman to execute the resolution, authorizing the inter-local agreement and B, authorize the chairman to execute the inter-local agreement between Citrus County, Florida and Florida Department, that's the same, the exact same thing. Okay, no, excuse me, approve and then authorize, thank you, um I'm looking for a motion on E fifteen, A and B.
Motion to approve E fifteen, A and B.
Commissioner Davis, looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Kennard, thank you, any public comment on E fifteen? Seeing none, any board comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, the, the only confusion, uh one's a resolution and one's an inter-local, so same actions, but two different documents.
Thank you, I I caught that in the last minute, thank you, and um any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, passes five-zero. E sixteen, T D C requests for Save Crystal River Project. Approved, A is approve the tourist development council's unanimous recommendation to award Save Crystal River two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And B, approve related budget transfers.
Motion to approve E sixteen, A and B, second.
A motion by Commissioner Davis and was that a second by you, Commissioner Kennard?
Yes.
Thank you, is there any public hearing, any public comment on E sixteen? Any board comment?
I have something.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you, I'm happy to approve this, I think this is a, a great spend for special projects. Um, you know, we, by state law, the money that comes in, it's back to getting more tours, back to getting more tours and I think that these special projects are a great way to replenish what our tourists are using. Um, just one caveat, I know that the Homer Sassa River Restoration Project will be putting in money and I hope that this board sees the value in that as the same as this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and will be ready to approve that also, but I am happy to approve this today.
Commissioner Davis?
Um, I already had a couple of discussions on that very topic with folks, with, I'm not allowed to speak with you, but some other folks in Homer Sassa to encourage them to definitely have their ducks in a row, do a really nice presentation with Workscope, all that other good stuff, um because they absolutely should get funding and according to, um that's one opinion, obviously it's a whole board, but um Mr. Pritchard said that in general that it's moving more, it's moving slightly away from just hardcore destination marketing to a little bit more leniency or or flexibility on destination management. Um and so therefore, we can start sort of giving back a little bit to our, we've already done some stuff with Riverwalk. Obviously, we're doing this, so Homer Sassa, I would love for Too Far, when they get a little further along to also apply. And then we can't forget with La Goochi, um and Chaz either. So we got solid, that's all our five major bodies and so it's a great thing that the bed tax can do for our community and and continue to be a globally attractive destination for tourists.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this and um when uh um when the proposal comes forward for Homer Sassa, um I'll be, I'll be right there to support that as well, as well as uh uh over on the lakes, over on the east side as well. Too Far, um uh obviously got a big step up with uh some legislative appropriation this year. I'm excited to see that project get moving and uh, you know, there the east side of the county's drawing visitors as well, so there needs to be some money put over there and I will be here to support it.
Commissioner Bayes?
Obviously, this group has done something very well, the, I think they've gotten something like forty million dollars over time. It would be nice to see uh some collaboration uh in other areas of our county to see if they can help wrangle the same amount of money out of state, you know, down to Homer Sassa and our lakes. Um, so I'm gonna support this, I would like to have one clarification on this. I know there's some segregation of pennies, you know, one being for capital projects and the other for, for a different pot of money, so this I see is coming out of capital, but was it done through a, one of the grants? Because that's how it appears is that it was for, through a grant application.
Bring John forward, please.
John Pritchard with Tourist Development, I was kinda hoping that would get answered before I got here. But they uh, yes, they did, they said, we have a, we have a large-scale grant and then we have, which is for if you were to bond the money, and it's a, it's a very charging, this one is a more simpler project where uh they could access capital funds. Anybody could access it and so we're.
So we collect one penny.
Four pennies.
Capital, correct.
Correct, it's, it's separate, four goes to fund the marketing efforts and one stays uh aside.
So currently, we have, before giving this two fifty out in the capital, we have a million four forty-seven seven twenty-four.
That sounds right, I mean, it's, yeah, there's a significant amount of uh balance in that, that fund right now.
So what's one penny generate approximately now in um tourist development council?
Last year was roughly five hundred, cuz we, we, we pulled in uh three point one, I think, in total revenue. So that's a first to cross the three million dollar threshold, also that's six hundred, my math's off. So yeah, it's six hundred, six hundred per percent at, at three million dollars.
Six hundred thousand per year for that one penny?
Well, one year, for one year, we did that, I don't, let's, let's not uh put the cart before the horse on the, it's three million every year. That's a, a, that's a, it's a double record, put it that way. The year before was a record and then we passed that this year by seven hundred thousand dollars, so that's a lofty bar, I'm happy to shoot for it. But I'm not gonna promise that that's every year.
I know we've got some other stuff, but I think, I mean, I would love just to see a report, you know, for you to come back and kinda tell us what your grant applications look like, um you know, where, how they fit into this. Um, loved a year, um have you updated a visitor profile where they've actually come on site lately to interview, to see where the majority of our people are coming from and I, it was my understanding, I know you get a star report on um the monies that come in through the hotels, but I'm, it's my understanding that they have some new way now that you can actually capture data on Airbnbs? Do you?
If you buy that.
Have you bought that, are you buying that?
No, uh mainly because we don't self-collect. So it's, it's, there's uh nobody to chase the money, if we had self-collection, the clerk would get more money, we would get more money cuz they're chasing, you know, that thing, we, the currently the state still collects the money for us. And they have a deal with all the vacation rentals, which sometimes is, um I was telling someone some, this morning, sometimes that's a little bit problematic when they, with the tax collector and the, and the laws they have to follow and the things that Airbnb and some of those others don't want to share. And that's been a hiccup for quite a while.
So have you looked to see, you know, we had a huge problem with that in the past on uh some of the Airbnbs. Do you feel like we're in the ballgame of what's out there for rent?
Yes, I think because.
Collecting what's owed us?
I think because the state has the agreement with the vacation rental properties like that, that we are getting what we're, what we're supposed to get. I don't, um, I, I, we haven't, since I've been here, we haven't really looked at doing the self-collection again other than when I start doing the, the basic math of costing three percent off the top. I'm not sure that we could recoup that.
Right, yeah.
Not yet, uh I still, I mean, it still circulates in my brain every so often to take a look and see what the math is and see. Um, there are advantages and that, and I mentioned there are some disadvantages to the self-collection, but the fact that the, you're paying an agency to go find people, uh sometimes that, the more accounts appear because there's money in it for the collecting agency, right? The state's not, I don't believe, is going to chase that many people uh because the money comes in.
Right, and then as far as like Madden medium? Um, is that a contract that's um bid every year or is it?
This, well, not every year, this year it is up for, it, the contract ends and we're out of extensions, so it will be going. I've given all my information to purchasing with the, with the urgency because if we have somebody new win, I would like them to be able to plan the new media plan. So we're shooting for early summer for the decision to be made one way or the other. If Madden wins again, it's not that big a deal because
Right.
that we just keep moving on and we just get a new contract. That was, and you mentioned, you mentioned earlier about the visitation, um research data services, that was um Dr. Clages's.
Yes.
Who's subsequently, he's passed away in the few, last few years, but his office still runs and that's who we currently contract for that kind of information. Uh, that is something we're also looking at is what is the right formula between kinda feelings and data. You know, the, on economic impact, there's, there's lots of things that we can get and it's all, it's just numbers and it's but I don't know that we're ready to change on the, um, I think we have a pretty good handle on who and what is coming and why. But I'm not certain that's something that, that's coming up in the next couple of months with the T D C discussed is how do we wanna move forward with research? Do we still need that um face-to-face surveys, is it, do we just want to be able to prove that we're super valuable? You know, those kinda things.
For instance, in one of these, I mean, you have the bid for um the zoo.
Right. That's connected to a larger project, there's a, um, we're developing an augmented reality uh on conservation with manatees and sacred, and, and Save Crystal River is a part of that. That's a launch site of that, as an extension of that, that's why the Cincinnati Zoo um activation is there, it's not just a standalone project.
Right, but I, I mean, I mean, how, I guess my point is saying, you pick Cincinnati, what made Cincinnati the right pick over some other state?
Madden, Madden ran an RFP for us and we, and for, over the whole country, some of them were way too expensive, like they started with who has some level of manatee connection. And um I seventy-five goes right through that area, which makes it good, they were the price range. Columbus Zoo would have been ex- excellent, they wanted two hundred thousand dollars to participate, which was more than the actual augmented reality project. So uh we had in mind, uh when we set up the discussion with Madden was we thought fifty thousand dollars would be the ceiling of where we'd wanna go for any one um activation and also that would might allow for multiple and right now, uh the Tampa, Tampa Zoo is also um onboard as a possible site.
Well, I guess the point I was trying to get at is on the visitor profile.
Yes.
How many people, a- a- and that's why it interests me, are coming in-state, traveling from some part of Florida? How many are coming from out-of-state? How many are coming from somewhere else in the world? And the monies that we're spending on these advertising programs, what's the return on investment for the visitor profile that we're attracting? That's really kinda where I was going with this.
Okay, yeah, I think uh a bigger presentation would make that easier, I mean, we have those numbers and, but it me just spitting out the number may not have the same uh weight for everybody and it, and it won't be as clear, I mean, that, that, but I'm happy to um whenever you wish to come back as soon as possible or however.
Are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
I have the great fortune of being the only commissioner that doesn't have tourism in their district. So um, you know, good for you, good for, you know, the fourteen point five million that Save Crystal River was able to get for um, from legislation and grants, I just didn't understand that tourism was in the business of matching grants. And if I had known that, I don't know how long y'all been doing that, but if I had known that, I would have possibly have gone forward to try to get some kind of um, you know. I would have possibly have gone forward to try to get some kind of, um, you know, we've talked many times about at the ballfield there in Central Ridge, getting some kind of tournament plays and which parent tourism. I didn't know this was available to us, so this is good news. What concerns me is you only have so much money and Commissioner Canard's already said, you know, send it out east, we gotta get to the lakes, we gotta get Home Sasa. Home Sasa i- is, it's dire straits to get them money and I would, I was with Commissioner Bayes to pull this and let's have a real discussion, but it was pushed through and good for you for getting it through, but I, I am concerned that we're gonna go ahead and give this this machine who's done an amazing job, this money and, and Little Beverly Hills won't have a chance to get any kind of money or um Home Sasa for that matter. And let, let's try to make this an even playing field. You, you know, your, your um department, your committee, your board is very much focused on Crystal River. And, and I know it, you, you get some money to Inverness, it's beds, be- heads in beds. But this, that's what I keep hearing a past commissioner, it's heads in beds. And I don't, I don't understand how this is working. You know, I don't, I don't understand how we're uh using tourism dollars to match a grant. So, you know, it's, 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 you know, I'm outnumbered in this area, so, you know. I just thought I would put that out. I have those questions, I would really like to know them. You gonna give me my answers? I'm getting a little hangry, so. Give me some money in Beverly Hills.
I keep telling you that I will support if you bring a proposal forward. Uh, and I will. The reality is, is that uh having heads in beds is what produces this revenue.
I, I get that.
And um I am with you that um, uh, tournaments out there on the central citrus fields uh could definitely and would definitely be tourism-related. Uh, I think there's, there's opportunity there to look towards uh these capital funds to try and improve. Uh, that, that was gonna be a big part of what I talked about on some of these other issues is I would like to see us refocusing on um improving existing resources that we have already here in the community, so that not only would they be a draw to tourists, but uh our residents could enjoy nicer facilities as well. Those soccer fields, increased number of baseball fields, nicer baseball fields, find out what these tournaments, these travel ball tournaments and such, what they need, and there's an opportunity there. We've got a great park out there in Central Citrus, we got a great park on the east and west side. Um, so I would be there to support, um, uh, support what you're talking about.
And, and, and I appreciate that, thank you.
So I will, I, I will be there, but we need, we need a proposal. Uh, you just heard that, um, you know, just the capital penny alone produced roughly six hundred thousand uh this past year. There's no guarantees it's gonna be at that number again this next year, but it should be a pretty significant number. Um, so there's, there's money there that we can use for these capital projects. The reason I, I wanted the floor initially before you mentioned that is uh, I'd like to find out if we are um restricted to that one penny for capital projects by statute or is that by county policy?
County po- Sorry, county policy.
So could we, I mean, would we be able to use funds from um any of those other first four cents or?
First two, the first two are open for capital, the, the, the widest um berth such as the statute allows. After that, it gets more narrow into things like spring training stadiums and profesh- and con- convention centers. So, um, yeah, the, the first two are the ones where most of the capital items are done because it's the, uh, like I said, it's, it's broad, but it's not, they're not like a promotional item. Promotion item is there are, it's a, it's a gigantic barn door. Promote, you know, capital is more like a regular door.
Okay, so potentially you could have um three of those five cents in play for capital projects. And I'm not saying we need to make that grab and only set aside two cents for marketing efforts, but there's a lot of revenue there that could come into play for different parts of the county, improving um, improving existing facilities or um, or, or projects within the county uh that benefit uh our tourism. I, I don't want, I don't wanna rob that. Um, but also provide uh better facilities for the residents of Citrus County. That revenue is there and I, I would like to see us explore that. I'd like to see the TDC start diving into that, start. Uh, not, I, I don't mean to say start, but I'd like to see the TDC um, thinking big, coming forward with a, a venue to host larger events. You know, the um, uh, CCA, the Coastal Conservation Association just had their banquet um last week, last Thursday, I think it was. Used to be held out at Rock Crusher Canyon and they, they, they were pushing usually about four hundred attendees to that banquet every year. A huge, huge fishing outdoor banquet. Uh, naturally, Rock Crusher sold, that venue's not available anymore. Uh, so they had their banquet at the, I believe it was at the Citrus Springs Community Center.
I went to that.
A big cold wet towel on the whole blanket. Um, they're just, uh, you know, that's not, that's not a knock on the community center, but that's not the venue where they wanna be at. You know, these, these fishing tournaments that we have, we just had this past weekend, there was a, a big bass tournament uh on the east side. I would love to see some type of venue to be able to host stuff like that. Or over on the west side, you know, fishing tournaments that happen over there. The plantation, I think Michael Mankey would tell you that they simply don't have the facilities to host these uh, these larger events. So I'd like to see, I'd like to hear that discussion is taking place uh on the TDC and some uh, uh, some travel ball type facility discussions. I'd like to see that kinda talk. Or hear that kinda talk.
Thank you. Are, are you done? I'm sorry. I interrupted you twice.
Yes, you did.
Forgive me, um, I'm, I'm hangry, I got three points, I am hangry. I, um, not a tourist person. I understand tourism, I get it, it's a business. Uh, but I, again, have a lot of residents that, um, frankly, need things and I, I beg for things and can't get it, so I'm curious to know how long this has been available. This, this one penny, I'm not gonna go to the two. This one penny right here, this matching money, ha- has this always been available to to nonprofits?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, the, the additional two cents were added prior to my arrival, so it would have been maybe twenty sixteen?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, it's close.
So when I, so when I was
That's when we started collecting five. Previously, we had the three, and that's when the new tourist development plan was developed to have one cent set aside. Um, so for capitals specifically, and the rest were go-to-marketing. An example of someone that's done something like that is Pasco County. They sat on one percent for a significant number of years and now they have the Wiregrass facility.
So, when Commissioner Carnahan and I talked about getting some tournaments and things at Central Ridge, this was never an option to go after grant money and matching. So, um, I'm gonna move on. Move on, but I, I know, I heard Commissioner Finnegan, I heard Commissioner Davis. I personally said to, that I, I would like to see um Home Sasa River and the Chain of Lakes get the same amount of money. I, uh, Steve Menge said he would, was putting an application in himself to the tourism.
They received, um, excuse me, they, they received sixty thousand dollars, uh, the Home Sasa River project. Similar to the, to the kickstart that Save Crystal River did. Um, I believe they were in line for a large um item out of the state budget that was vetoed. Though, I think it was about ten million dollars.
Are you trying to run, rub salt in our wounds?
Just, I'm clearing some facts.
No, we, we know those facts, but uh I, I would hope that they would come to get the remainder of the, that it's there and, and Inverness and, and encourage you commissioners to, to go for it. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Davis and then Commissioner Finnegan.
I'm happy to hear Commissioner Canard that you would be backing other things. You've um now served with me for two and a half years. You've heard me back travel ball and all that other good stuff. You'll be happy to know that we've already talked about in the TDC, we've talked about conference center, we have talked about pickleball, things like that. Whatever we do has to be for tourists, and yes, it could be in District Three with Central Ridge. As far as Crystal River versus Home Sasa versus Sala Papka, I love all my children equally. And I, I can throw Chaz in there, Chaz is magical, and the Withlakuchi as well. So I am not going to be um angry that Crystal River got funding from the state. I'm going to be hugely disappointed that Home Sasa did not get it as well. And so I um talked to our lobbyist and I said, we're all going to Tallahassee this month. Can you please get us a list, all five commissioners, a list of exactly who our hit points are to lobby? Because it ain't over till the fat lady sings. So we might still be able to get some funding for Home Sasa from the state. And then, um, I am all for to, to back up what Mr. Pritchard said. Yes, they've gotten sixty thousand before as a Kickstarter with um Home Sasa, but I have been very encouraging for them to apply for the same amount that Crystal River got. As long as they have a defined scope of work and they can sell it, it's a, it's a low bar. We have, um, prior to this, we have over a million dollars in capital, right? And so that seems to me like we have plenty to help all of the bodies of water that apply for it and we can start formulating plans for other things. And as I said earlier too, back to your point about grants and so forth, we, the thinking in, this is a business, this is an industry, this does have best practice sort of thinking. And what Mr. Pritchard has said is that the best practice thinking is moving away from, not away from, but opening up the door for more um destination management, not just destination marketing, because the state of Florida has been hugely successful in promoting tourism here and doing destination marketing, and so we need to manage it better. Is that pretty?
Yeah, I think it's also, in terms of management, it's also product. If the water, if the water is bad, then our main thing may not be the same thing as it was in terms of the, so that's where the management comes in, is it, in assisting uh, the groups that are, that are striving to keep the product better and improve it. So that's, that's the doorway that we're um walking now, is I think some of the, some of the paths like you mentioned earlier, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, Commissioner Canard took the ask literally out of my mouth. But I wanted to see if we could take that one step further. I think that's a great idea. I had the same question about can we throw, how many more pennies can we throw on that? Um, getting the information's good, but can we put some sort of a timeline on that? I think that sometimes we have good ideas and then people get busy and then we don't get the information or in time to make the change. I'm not sure what the time is to make the change, uh, Mr. Howard, but ca- can we start moving forward with investigating that?
Absolutely, we will, we will do that.
Madam Attorney.
Sorry, I, I, I just, I just didn't want you to feel too bad, Commissioner Slava, because water is given a preferred treatment in the statute. So when you talk about how this is allowable under the statute, um, there's a specific statute that talks about, you know, beaches, uh, ju- I'm just gonna say water and summarize the whole statement or the whole provision. There's no separate provision that talks about things like ballparks. So that's why it's easy to give money under the statute to the water-related things, restoration, beach restoration and so forth. Um, so for the, the ballparks and things, uh, the legislative intent is going to have to be drawn very narrowly to serve its purpose, because generally it's just about marketing and promoting tourism and things like that. Like improving ballfields or building ballfields, I don't know that that fits within the
Well, I'm not even gonna get my hopes up, but it was for tournaments. To bring, to bring tournaments here. And, um, yeah.
Marketing.
But anyway, like I said, I'm hangry, so let's just move on if we will. Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Davis, please speak.
I'll be brief. Um, I am, it is a balance between improving our resources and attracting tourists to come here, right? So I am open to changing the four-one designation that we have now. However, I would just throw in a cautionary moment that if we reduce what we spend, invest in marketing to have people come here, you may see our overall revenues fall. Right? So you got, there's, there's a fine balance in there. Totally open to looking at it, absolutely a hundred percent open to looking at it. Cause I would love to have some more capital improvements in the county as well.
And I appreciate that, and I got on Commissioner Finnegan earlier for trying to mansplain something to me, and that is something that is very obvious, that you don't wanna stop your marketing, because then you would stop the tourists from coming, so I do understand that, so thank you.
I just wanna say one, one last thing. The only thing I would like for you all to take in consideration as you, we talk about these water bodies and particularly on tidal water bodies. We all know what happened in the no-name storm. And if we spend lots of these monies through our tourist development council and we have another no, no-name storm event, it can wipe out all the good efforts that have been put not only by this board but by the state. And also in addition to, if you ever get some kind of an outbreak on the manatee, um, it, you've literally wiped out every single thing you have spent and, and built your whole campaign around. So that would be my only suggestion as, as you, um, get into your think tank and you talk about these things, I would take that into consideration.
Are you saying to diversify a little bit? Is that what I'm hearing you're saying?
I'm throwing it out there for conversation points, that if you're spending, i- if, if you start to allocate all your dollars, especially on tidal waters and we have a storm event, it could literally, uh, uh, everything that you've, you've invested in for years could be wiped out in a moment. So that's just my two cents.
Okay, anything further? Okay, here and done. Um, we did, did we do public comment? It's been so long.
We did everything.
We did.
We did?
And then, thank, oh, wait a minute, maybe not.
No?
I don't remember.
So, uh, we are, I don't either, thank you. Uh, E sixteen, I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Canard, we did public comment. We did a lot of board comments. Um, all in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. That will pass. I held my nose, five zero. No. It's, it's about time you get to see the real me. So, E, thank you, thank you, John. E seventeen. We took care of, E eighteen we pulled, E nineteen we pulled, and, um, E twenty. E twenty is a revenue study proposal that we asked for, um, regarding, I can't remember what this revenue study was for, to be honest.
Alternative revenue sources, that was the one that was discussed at the board retreat. And I got the quote from Neighbors Giblin and this is ask them to do the study, to prepare the study.
Motion approved, item E twenty A and B.
Second.
Of a motion by Commissioner Canard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan.
Yes. Can we also include the update for the um fire services in this to actually look at what the, um, what it would look like i- if, on the exemption side?
Well, that's Denise, cause Denise is actually the one that was working with them.
We'd have to get a quote from them to find out, that would be a separate a separate study. Uh, they would have to engage a statistical-type company to run the statistics and so forth.
I think it's a good suggestion.
I had a motion by Commissioner Canard and a second by who, Amy? I had a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by who, Amy? Finnegan, thank you. Went to public. Did I go to public? I'm so sorry. It's going bad. I'm going south fast. Is there any public comment on E twenty? Seeing none, is there any board comment? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Commissioner Davis? Thank you. Thank you. F, outstanding commission items.
Nothing, no changes.
Thank you, sir. First person to make me smile today. Uh anything G? County Commissioner, uh County Administrator, Mr. Howard? Nothing for G? Okay, and then uh H, advisory board announcements. We have H one nominate and appoint members of the aviation advisory board. We need to nominate one member at large for the aviation advisory board. It's a two year term. And we wanna take them one at a time. I'm going to defer.
Madam Chair, I normally take the lead on this and I am highly annoyed at the moment because I can't get back up on the computer. You can, yes. So I just sent Doug to print it out. Anyway, where are we?
We are at.
I was trying to pull it up ahead of time. There we go. H one, got it.
Somebody order pizza.
Hangry. No breakfast, no lunch.
Well, don't bring up tourism. Poor little Beverly Hills. I'll just go ahead. I'll nominate. Heiko?
Heiko.
Heiko Kollenbach. I'm trying to pull this up, just give me one second because at least I'll have it in my email.
We're looking at member.
Just hang on one second.
Yeah, I got a star by that.
Heiko Ma- and um. Louise, seeking reappointment, so I nominate Heiko.
Well, we're taking one at a time. Member at large. I have a motion by Commissioner Bays for Heiko Kollenbach.
Okay, second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on this nomination? Seeing none, any board comment? All in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Right now we have four zero. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve Mark Klingel for District Two member.
Second, that's who I was gonna nominate. Would you like to talk me out of that?
Yeah, I would like to talk you out of that. Um is he the only one applying to District Two?
He's the new one. He just applied.
That's the only one.
That's the only one. So you're, there you go. I was looking at, I was thinking this one uh was two. Okay, very good.
We're blessed with a lot of good applicants, but oh they're frequently in all in the same districts, like two districts.
Of course, because they're not, oh, that's Homosassa. Commissioner Finnegan, on um item H one one.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a nomination on H one two for um District Two. That was, um, forgot his name, Kennard. I was think, trying to remember Kennard's name. And who was the second on that nomination, Davis? Were you the?
Yes.
Second? Okay, is there any po- public comment on the nomination of Mark Klingel? Seeing none, any board discussion? I, I am aware of this him. I um, he's from uh Sarasota County, so I, I am aware of him. So um all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. H one three nominate and appoint one District Three regular member position.
Madam Chair, um nominate Louise Michaels for reappointment.
Second.
Okay, how long has, uh, I wanted to say one thing about him. Okay, he's very new. Okay, um so I have a nomination by Commissioner Davis. For uh reappointment of Louise Michaels. And I have a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any board comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
You're welcome. Anytime. Uh we have done I J committee reports from commissioners. Let's start with Commissioner Finnegan, please.
Nothing, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um Davis, committee reports?
Yes, I had three. Um value adjustment board, which Commissioner Finnegan, I was gonna let you do that report. Essentially, um they nom- they renominated me chair while I was gone last August. So um this August, hopefully the chair will go.
I nominated you.
Someone else. Thanks, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um had the National Association of Counties um Community and Economic Workforce Development Committee this week. Uh about half of it was on coal communities, so I multitasked on that part. And the other part, I have a um PowerPoint I need to go through and digest and disseminate to the board because it was pretty cool stuff. The big one is medical examiner. Typically, it's a quarterly board meeting. We have upped that to monthly. Until we figure out um where and how to locate a new facility. We are busting out at the seams. And the current facility with the, the um growth, you heard me talk about that two weeks ago. So um Erin Doran and I went over to Lake County and sat in there on last Friday. And that was really awesome to have her there because of her um budget direction experience in that discussion, so. Stay tuned. You're putting in the CIP, right Erin? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Bays.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Kennard.
Nothing.
Um it's not necessarily a committee report, but since I've been the bearer of such joy today. I'm gonna tell you, I celebrated my thirtieth wedding anniversary the other day and um. I'm happy that he is still with me. It's more a testament to his character than mine, but um, okay, so we've done that um. Commissioner Finnegan, do you have anything you would like to discuss? Thank you. Commissioner Kennard, anything you would like to discuss?
The only thing uh that I'd like to mention is I understand that, that um most, if not all of us, will be spending some time in Tallahassee over the next two weeks. We've been, uh Citrus County has been very successful. In, in getting uh money out of Tallahassee. Not, not because of me, but since I've been here in two thousand sixteen. But the um, the key, and I think, I think that you would hear this from uh the chamber that's, that's organized legislative days up there. Um as well as, you know, others that have been there for some period of time. Is that we're all singing the same tune when we get up there. We went through great lengths to put together a document of our legislative priorities. Uh whether we're in a group or in individual meetings, it would benefit our county as a whole if we all stick to the same songbook. Uh while we're up there. Push our, uh push our legislative priorities. And good things tend to happen at the end of the session for our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Bays.
Well, today we um recognized the proclamation, the history of Floral City. And so they're going to have their heritage days uh on March twenty fifth, so I'd invite everybody out. And as much as we talk about um preserving our county with the growth that we're experiencing. Um Floral City really just demonstrates old Florida. And um there's a group of people out there that worked tirelessly, volunteering their time. And uh put a lot of effort and energy into it, so I hope that you all will come out and um share with them the work that they put in. And celebrate the history of Floral City.
Thank you.
And since Diana grew up there.
I'm putting it on my calendar.
We'll expect you to be there.
Commissioner Davis.
I have nothing further.
Okay, and um I, I don't know um. I, I agree with you, Commissioner Kennard. I, I appreciate um we're gonna fight for what we have asked for. I hope that we get it and then I hope next year we can uh get some money from District Three. I'm just gonna keep asking and begging because it's, it's just, it's getting, it's just depressing. So I would like to try to get a plan together, have staff help me to really come up with a plan to see what we could do to. Revitalize that area and uh, you know, smallest district, the most people. Um some of the most vulnerable, I think, you know, Homosassa, we all have vulnerable areas. Um but um, you know, let's see what we could do, if we could formulate a plan to, if, if you, if you all are in agreement. For next year to try to figure something out for District Three. And um other than that, I have um, I, you know, uh about a year and a half ago. I had a tour with uh at the then President Simpson of the Homas- Homosassa Wildlife Park. I don't know if. You were aware of that or, or Commissioner Davis was aware of that, but um when I was there, I um asked him. Uh it was brought up by our, uh I like to say my friendly nag, Alonda McCarty, that the. Uh observatory was, windows were leaking. So um got to take um President and the, the Parks Director at the time down there. And um he was able to get uh Homosassa Park one point six million dollars for the observatory. We have spent the last six months trying to track it down, but through his staff and um me making lots of nice. Calls, I uh, we were able to get it. It's in the works now. They're putting out a bid. It's gonna be quite involved. It's, you know, probably a coffer system and um it will be, i- it's gonna be a historical. It's a historical marker. Uh I can't think of the word, a historical um designation. And it will be one of the only places that um ADA compliant. That people could go underwater and look in this observatory uh in, in the state, so. So that's pretty exciting, exciting for your district. Again, not my district, but your district, but keep moving on, keep fighting for all this stuff. But that is very good news and I, I've been kind of, you know, I'm kind of superstitious, didn't wanna say it until we had the money. But the Homosassa does show the money in their account, so. Very good news. So, end on a happy note. Um now we go to the attorney, P.
Yes, thank you. I, I seem to have lost my agenda matter. I think I gave it to somebody at a briefing and. Thank you. Uh with the recent communications we received, it's become readily apparent that Swift Mud intends to uh ready their lawsuit. So in preparation of responding to that, uh I am asking for an opportunity to seek. Pricing, to retain uh outside counsel to assist with um a title search and some other matters related to that lawsuit.
Motion approved, item P one.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on P one? Seeing none, is there any board comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh at this time, I'm gonna open to the public. If you'd like to speak at this time, please fill out a green card. You have three minutes to speak. Please give us your name. Oh, Heiko, you've sat here the whole day.
It's what I do best, sit around. I'm retired, as you know.
What is your name, sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Heiko Kollenbach. I am a resident of Beverly Hills, um District Two. Thank you very much.
Three.
Three, thank you. I can never remember. I'm bad with numbers. And I'm the uh, uh current Chairman of the Aviation Advisory Board. Just wanna thank the uh. The Board of Commissioners for, for the faith you continue to place in us, the reappointment of myself and uh Mr. Michaels. And we look forward to meet, to uh meeting our new member next month, getting back to work. And as always, we're here for you, whatever you need from us. Um in terms of input, in terms of research, in terms of advice and counsel. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment, open to the public. And um. Our upcoming meetings, we have our regular meeting March twenty eighth at one PM here in this room. Uh April eleventh, twenty twenty three at one PM, right here in room one hundred. Papka Avenue and April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three at one PM in this room. We have upcoming workshops and special meetings, the Citrus County Elected Community Leadership Summit. Which is Wednesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three at nine AM. I believe Commissioner Kennard is buying everyone lunch. It is at the Sovereign Path, room one sixty six in La Canto. We have the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Strategic Planning Retreat, Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty three at nine AM at twelve PM. Nine AM to twelve PM at uh right here in this room. And the preliminary budget hearing Wednesday, July twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, Citrus County Courthouse. Uh the governing body of Special Library District eight thirty AM, Fire Protection Special District eight forty five AM. And the B O C C at nine AM. We have a tentative budget hearing September seventh, Thursday at five oh one PM. Citrus County Courthouse, room one hundred, and a final budget hearing Tuesday, September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. At five oh one, right here. This will be here before we can even blink an eye. So we have to sharpen our pencils to get ready for this. I did um the May. The May, where are we at? Okay. Excuse me, sorry. Okay, April. Very good. Okay, at this time, I'm just going to take a.
Ma- Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um just real quick, I need to apologize to the board. I missed this when we approved our board dates. Uh Wednesday, July nineteenth. Um let me see, yes, July no- well, not that one. The uh, let me see, the April meeting coming up.
Twenty fifth.
Yes, I will be out of town um that uh April, I believe it's the, is it the twenty?
April twenty fifth?
Yes, yes, I will be out of town April twenty third through the twenty seventh. And um I will be out of town for that um uh July nineteenth. Uh planning retreat as well. So I apologize for that. Uh I should have caught it when we planned, um when we approved the board dates, um but I did not.
Okay, thank you.
I have notified the county administrator uh of that in an email, uh but I just wanna make sure the board was aware of it as well.
I just require doctor's excuse.
You got it. I'll get you one.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure exactly uh what the dates of the upcoming FAC meetings are. But in the future, as we know. Today starts part of our FAC conference. And um.
Tomorrow?
Either they get moved around or you have a lighter agenda. Uh we've missed out probably on some pretty valuable information today with the. Small county coalition. So I would ask in the future if we could coordinate these dates around that and um work with our.
Absolutely. I'm learning, I'm doing the same things. I'm gonna be traveling tomorrow myself and tonight, but uh we will do that in the future when we're setting the calendar for that. We're gonna look at all these dates and make sure that.
And it's actually happened, I think, at least three times in the two and a half years for FAC. It, it makes very late driving situations because they start at seven thirty in the morning.
They should already have those, the dates for the next year already, so we'll, we'll make sure we back into those, we set the calendar next year.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're gonna just call a recess and uh we'll be back at five oh one. Thank you. Hello, welcome. Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. It's uh, Tuesday, March fourteenth, five oh one, we've got two, I, I didn't bite it. It just pulled it apart, um, today, today we have two, um, something somethings, and um. So we're gonna go through this procedure pretty quickly, um, the applicant will have the opportunity to present the application after the county staff will make its presentation, then the commission will open it up to public, once the public portion is closed, the applicant will have an opportunity to make a brief rebuttal, um, I'll open it up, the commission for discussion and action. Um, if any person decides to appeal any decision made by the commission with respect to any matter considering at this hearing, he or she will need a record of the proceeding, and for such purposes, he or she may need to ensure a verbatim record of the proceeding that is made, which records include testimony, evidence upon which the appeal is based on. During the public portion of this hearing, proponents and opponents' comments will be limited to three minutes for individuals and five minutes for the organization. If you're wishing to speak, please come up, fill out a card, give us your name and number, um, name and address, and um, like I said, uh, after you've signed in, you just state your name, spell your last name, and the address for the taped record. Thank you and welcome, so, T one, miss, oh, it's not.
Yes ma'am.
T one, is that where we're starting?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am, go ahead.
With re- with regard to CPAAAPUD dash twenty-two dash fourteen, have you had any ex parte communications you need to disclose for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Finnegan.
I have not.
No.
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 Thank you, Madam Chair, at the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to be asked to consider two ordinances. The first ordinance of Citrus County, Florida Political Subdivision of the State of Florida, amending the Citrus County Future Land Use Map by redesignating approximately one point five three acres from the medium density residential district to the general commercial district. Providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And the second ordinance is an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida Political Subdivision of the State of Florida, amending Citrus County Land Use Atlas Map by redesignating approximately one point five three acres from the general commercial district to the general commercial district with a planned unit development for many warehouses. Providing for conflicts, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. And I believe Dr. Wilburn is here for the applicant.
Good evening, Dr. Wilburn.
Commissioners. Michael Wilburn, local engineering Inc., address P O Box nine three eight, Floral City, Florida, three four four three six. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight on behalf of this project. As shown on the master plan, the proposed self-storage facility consists of two buildings totaling twenty-five thousand square feet on one point five three acres. As you have seen in other projects in the past, some storage facilities are moving towards an unmanned, uh, no office electronically in and out entry. This project, considering the owner is somewhat adjacent, uh, and very close to this parcel, will also be unmanned and unoccupied, no office. This project appeared twice before the Planning and Development Commission, and the reason for this was the first attempt. Uh, there were three buildings on this, uh, part, master plan proposed, and in an attempt to have a less intense impact, uh, we presented again, uh, a change to the master plan you see here, which resulted in us having to go back before the Planning and Development Commission. If you could go to the next slide, please. Currently, the property is Zone G N C, but the future land use map is M D R. As you can see from this picture, there is a clear line, um, a clear green line at the north side of this property that separates currently the G N C from the M D R. I would also like to point out that as it is going to be shown again, and as it's gonna be shown again in the future, the development that you see right now on the far right of the screen for, um, perspective, is the Holiday Inn and Express on, um, Highway forty-four. So you guys see on the far right of the screen, that's the Holiday Inn, that's the parking lot, in respect to where this parcel is now. Um, keep in mind, the Holiday Inn is G N C, a significant portion of the adjacent property is G N C, and as you'll see from the next slide, this is the current map, uh, showing the difference between where the delineation is between G N C and M D R. Uh, you can currently, you can see the G N C limits, and you can kind of see that, once again, that established line straight across from east to west. Uh, keep in mind, this is the current land use map, and so I would also like to draw your attention on this land use map to where that Holiday Inn is, because now I'm backed out a little bit further. So the parcel that you see that's all the way to that line of differentiation between G N C and L D R, that is labeled and has a label G N C, uh, that is the Holiday Inn, the parcel to the east of that, uh, if you guys are familiar with the area, uh, there's a large cross axis and a steep slope, and that is the Church Without Walls. And you can kind of see from our map, the GIS map, the northeast corner of that parcel, while it is M D R, it is the retention pond for the Church Without Walls development. So this kinda, I wanted to show you guys this because, again, this is the current G N C map, and you can kind of clearly see uh, where that line is with a few anomalies, one being, uh, the retention pond which will never be developed as M D R. All right, next slide, please. This slide shows the future land use map of the same area. The futu- the future land use map shows the proposed parcel changing from G N C to M D R, as you can see from this picture. However, if you notice, it is the only parcel that changes from, uh, G N C to M D R in the future land use map. And again, I would submit that you can clearly see an east to west line of differentiation between G N C and M D R on the existing land use map as well as the future land use map, slide five, please. Now I wanna show you the same information again, but from a larger block, zoomed out for perspective. And please keep in mind, the, the white area where the Holiday Inn is, that's all G N C, don't let the white, um, be a confusing factor. Please notice the areas in red are the G N C on the future land use map, the brown is M D R, and the yellow is L D R. Now this is important, and I'd like you to, to, uh, I wanna expand on what I'm gonna show you here. Not only is there a clear line of differentiation between the G N C and the M D R on this map, which is the future land use map, I wanna point out a few anomalies, and I've already mentioned one of them being the retention pond on the east side, adjacent to the Holiday Inn. I'd like to draw your attention over to the west side, where you see those two small areas of orange, kind of creeping down into the G N C area. Those two small areas are part of and contiguous to the parcels that are, uh, to the south, they're all one parcel. There's just a line through that one parcel, which separates M D R from G N C. And why I'm pointing that out is you'll notice that there is one parcel running north to south in the middle of those that has G N C that goes all the way to the line of separation between M D R and G N C. Uh, why I'm pointing that out, that parcel that goes all the way up is the Citrus Recycling Center. So keep in mind, the M D R that in the future land use map crops into this G N C area, uh, only is accessed through another G N C area, has no other access, is contiguous to, and all part of one parcel. And in addition to that, they're only about seventy feet wide at its widest point. And so the, the, the likelihood and the chances of this actually being developed as M D R are slim to none in practicality, because whoever buys those two vacant parcels on either side of the Citrus Recycling Center is not gonna wanna put medium density houses, uh, and certainly not access through another commercial property. Next slide, please. All right, so here is a clear image of those parcels in question, and I've just squared them off for simplicity's sake. So you can see the vacant parcels of land on the west side and the east side of the Citrus Recycling Center on the left. You can see our subject property, you can see the adjacent parcel, which is commercial in the front, and this M D R um, going up to the current line, M D R versus G N C separation, and then also you see in orange on the far right, the retention pond for, um, the Church Without Walls development.
Joe, can you zoom in? I missed the big screen, by the way. It's, it's hard for me to see on, in the book and on that. That was pretty good, the zoom.
Where would you like to zoom?
On the property itself, that the, with the red, that's the, what we're talking about.
Yes, that's the property.
And, and what is in front of it?
Okay, I haven't got there yet, but.
Then if, keep going, don't, don't let me interrupt you.
May I? The, the red outline?
Yes.
And does it go around the orange block?
No, it does not.
Okay, so it's just zero, zero, five, zero is what we're talking about.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Good, okay.
She's got a computer, I can watch.
All right. Um, for the record, do they have the PowerPoint that I'm looking at too?
Yes.
In front of, okay. Here is a clear image of the description I just gave you without, with the unusual outliers of M D R, so can you zoom back out? And you can see there's, there's four of them, including the subject parcel. Uh, and again, the subject parcel is the only one that changes in the future land use map from G N C to M D R. Uh, the ones all the way on the left will be before you at some point in the future to also change to G N C, makes sense. And, and the one on the far right, you'll never see because it's overlaid over retention pond. I've heard a lot of discussion recently from this board, as well as the P D C board, about, uh, transition zones. And making sure that we establish them, what should be considered as a part of the development and transition zones and et cetera. And I would like to point out some operations which may not be evident from a cursory look at the surroundings, and, and I'm not sure if any of you guys did a site visit. Um, but if you did, you'll understand what I'm about to say. And keep in mind, the property is currently Jones G N C, and I believe this is for good reason, because the property that is to the south is, um, a, a subcontractor office, there's four different offices located within that building. Uh, Michael's floor covering is right there at the corner of Highway forty-four. Um, and Salisbury, and then on the east side, which I'll show you in just a moment, is a large warehouse building that is currently used by the Citrus County Sheriff's Department. Between the current parcel that's outlined in red, and the development to the south, is a commercial driveway. Now this commercial driveway, uh, is just that, however, I want to show you over the next few slides how this commercial driveway is currently used and will be used in the future, uh, next slide, please. Okay, so here's a, um, a zoomed in picture of the same thing, and you'll notice, um, because you can see closer, you'll notice that there's a lot of cars outside on the commercial warehouse on the right-hand side, east side of the property, uh, to the south, you'll see a fifty-three there. Uh, this is not an image that I doctored, this is not an image that, um, I manufactured, this is right from the Citrus County website, the GIS website, and there are fifty-three current vehicles in that parking lot. I do not know how many are inside getting service, but just from this aerial, there are fifty-three cars in the parking lot, and so as you'll notice, all of these fifty-three cars access that parcel through that commercial driveway just to the south of this development. Let's see here, okay, now I would like you to imagine if this parcel was built out as the future land use map depicts as a medium density residential. And maybe there's six to nine duplexes on this parcel, uh, with all of that commercial traffic, all those headlights, all of that sound, all of that noise. Um, all of those things that will be associated with the current use of that building as well as the roadway, is not a very good fit. It makes sense, the product that we're proposing, uh, to allow to be that transition, to be that buffer from this heavy used commercial area to an area that is rarely used as a commercial use, which is a storage unit. And I'll talk more about that in just a few minutes. Next slide, please. I wanted to show you this slide, which is the same as what you just saw, except zoomed out a little bit farther, so that, um, actually, I think you're still zoomed in a little bit, there, thank you, um, can you go back one? Are you zoomed in? Can you zoom out? No, it's a different slide, it's okay. Um, I wanted to show you this slide zoomed out, so you can see Highway forty-four, uh, you'll notice the Highway forty-four, there is an access point. Uh, but this access point is not for this commercial building. The commercial building that you see with the fifty-three cars, only access provided is that, um, driveway connection, that commercial driveway connection that I just showed you east to west, between subject property and the existing development. The access point that is here on forty-four has been determined by our engineering department, Citrus County, through back and forth, back and forth with the current owner as not usable. And so it hasn't been used, you'll notice, I don't have a clicker, but if you see on your PowerPoint, or you might notice on the screen, there's a very dark line that separates the cars from what looks like a, a gravelled area. That is a gated and locked, uh, facility, no access in and out. Um, next slide, please. This is again, the image of the same access point, and you can kind of see that black fence, all right, next slide, please. All of the access to the sheriff's office building is through this roadway that is shown between the two red lines. This area is just to the right of the subject parcel that is before you. Um, and this is the access to the building which you can't really see from this picture, the, the existing sheriff's office building with the fifty-three cars outside and the plus inside, and to the left, uh, which is to the north, you'll notice that is the empty area where the proposed storage is to happen. So if you can imagine the traffic going back and forth on this roadway on a daily basis, and then the M D R at that clear established line that's existing now, and I would submit in the future as well. Um, that storage facility will provide a buffer to this intense use that is currently happening. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so I just wanted to bring back this picture, showing a clear delineation between the red and the orange uh, in the area, just with a few outliers, the four that we've already mentioned. Uh, three of which will never be developed as M D R due to their location, due to the site restrictions, and because of common sense. This brings us back to our site and the proposed project that is before you. The proposed project, I would like to submit, provides the following checkmarks for the county, and many comments that I've heard from this board and the Planning and Development Commission previously. This project is not on our main highway. This project provides a transition zone between the heavily used commercial properties that I've already addressed to the south and the commercial roadway, and provides a buffer to the medium density residential zoning. Number three, it provides a sound buffer, it will provide a visual buffer, and permanent protection from the existing commercial uses to the future development of M D R in the area. Number four, it brings compatibility to the other surrounding G N C properties on the future land use map, looking east to west and that horizontal line that currently separates on both maps. And number five, it does not use, uh, utilities, it is not gonna draw on our utilities, it's not gonna draw on our, um, traffic, it is a, a fraction of the traffic that would have if this was developed as medium density residential. It has no office, so there's no water, there's no sewer, uh, there's no sprinkler system, it is, it, it's a, it's a site that doesn't draw on our consumption, doesn't draw on our utilities. And you can see here, from this slide, I just darkened and made more red that line east to west, which separates. And that line continues, if you were to zoom out and continue heading towards Prestro River, uh, you would clearly see this line differentiating G N C from commercial. And so again, before we go to the next slide, I'm sorry, G N C from medium density.
Doctor, I'm sorry to interrupt you again. You said there's no office, so there's no restroom on site?
That's correct.
Oh, and eh, how, how does that work not having an office?
Okay, so many storage facilities that have offices even, they have, um, websites, you can, you can download an app, you can rent a unit, you can pick your unit from your mobile device, from your computer, you can fill out all the information on your computer, you can set up automatic payment. They give you a digital code right then and there after you've paid, it's, most of the facilities that you have now, that are manned, uh, a lot of their traffic is through digital, and they're just there.
So, um, if I rented a uni- a unit, you don't have to supply me with a bathroom?
No, I do not.
Okay, so it's all basically AI, this, the, the.
Yes.
Wow, okay.
And you'll see more and more of these, uh, coming, and there's already been some here.
Okay, thank you.
Statewide, nationwide, you'll see more and more of this. Um, you, you, hotels are the first people, since you asked, hotels are the first people Hilton, uh, to patent. And, and if you have a Hilton app, you'll notice now you can pick your room, you can do all kinds of stuff. Uh, this is way before you get digital keys, so this is, this is something that not just this industry's doing, but other industries as well.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Um, Commissioner Davis had a. Um. Question.
Doctor, what is the, um, typical, is there sort of a industry standard, typical in-out e- ingress, egress?
Yes.
With, um, mini storage?
Yes, I have that in another slide, but I'll answer it now.
Okay.
Um, point two-two peak hour trips per thousand square feet. So this project would generate at most, and they're conservative, uh, six peak hour trips. Versus an M D R development would be about twenty-four.
Okay, and what is defined as peak hour?
Um, the highest quantity within a twenty-four hour period.
But, is that like? Is that morning, morning and evening?
With storage, with storage, um, they model it over a twenty-four hour period, and then they do a, a line of, uh, regression to figure out where, um, the highest concentration is, so they don't give you a, a window of time, it's not like a church or a business operating hours.
How many trips a day then, how many visits a day?
Um, for this site?
Are you saying it would be six times?
No, no.
Twenty-four or six?
Peak hour is worst case, so it would be, I'll tell you.
If you're me, you rent it and six months later, your husband tells you to clear it out and?
That's kind of my point.
About nine trips a day. Nine point five would be, uh, total.
The highest.
Per day, yes.
Yeah, the highest.
Right. Um, but they do it by peak hour, uh, so it'll be six peak hour. And again, that number's conservative, the IT manual sometimes is conservative with its age factor up, up to three. So you're really looking at, in the real world, maybe two to three peak hour trips, which is not, but not much of a draw at all. Uh, so again, I want to go back to this slide, which I have heaved in the line between GNC and MDR. And I want to point out again that the, the parcel, the two parcels all the way on the left, those are sandwiched in. They're, they're anomalies, they're outliers, they, they make no sense for m- medium-density residential. Uh, they're adjacent to a commercial, they're right next door recycling center. And then all the way on the right-hand side, that is a retention pond, so, I mean, theoretically, it wouldn't matter what it is, it'll never be developed as apartments. Um, and the parcel to the right of the subject property is GNC up front, as you can see. So that parcel, when it's sold, it'll probably come before you as well to get, to, to request a zone change to allow GNC all the way to the rear. Um, next slide, please. Okay. Did we miss one? No, we're good. Okay, going back to the proposed master plan, please note the area to the south is where the heavily-used access roadway is for the sheriff's office building right now. Uh, it's, you'll see it coming to go at an angle, it follows the property line that you see at the bottom of the screen there. Uh, the area to the north is currently zoned MDR. I'd like to point out a few other things on this site plan. Um, so now I'm going to focus on this, this actual plan, this storage facility. You'll notice that the retention pond is labeled as being walled in, that's because of the topography of the site. So many, uh, storage facilities are approved, uh, with a wall, and so this one by default has to have a wall to retain the water. And so on the north side of the parcel, not only will you have a wall, but the, what I'm going to consider an amenity of this site, and this proposal is that that wall is actually inside the buffer. So a lot of times, when you see a wall, you'll have a wall on the property line, you have all the plants on the inside, and nobody can see the plants, all they see is the wall. Uh, this particular site, as proposed, has the wall to hold back the water, and then it has all of the plantings, and I'll show you a picture of that in just a moment. We are proposing that this wall, um, serve as a, an amenity, as a, as a aesthetically pleasing wall, as well as one to assist in the buffering of, uh, the subject property to the north and to the east. You'll also notice that the northernmost building, it does not have any doors on the north side. It'll also be a, a blank wall, walled off, so again, noise. Um, look at this whole part, particular parcel, it's restricting noise that currently exists from the south. And it, it is going to serve and would serve as a nice buffer to the medium-density residential when it's developed on the north side. This project will become a transition between the heavy-used, uh, almost industrial-type use to the south. And it'll, it'll be a very low-impact, um, low-trip-count storage facility, which Ms. Davis has already mentioned. This will enhance the future medium-density residential development, which may come to the parcel to the north. And again, it'll serve as a sound barrier, a visual protection, and a tremendous, um, wall and buffer between all of those fifty-three cars plus that travel that roadway every day. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, you'll also notice that the wall continues down the east side for about, uh, halfway, and that is because of the topography also. So not only will it have a, a buffer wall on the north side, it'll have one halfway down the east side as well. Next slide. Okay, um, next slide. Next slide. Okay, if this putt is not approved, and the future land use map is developed in the future, I want to show you a visual of what that may look like. The parcel would be able to have several duplexes located on it, these duplexes would be subject to commercial traffic. They would also experience all of the headlights, et cetera, they would experience the early morning commutes uh, to and from the sheriff's office, as well as the subcontractor office with four units below. Um, they'll have noise, they'll have headlights, they'll have sound pollution. Uh, these duplexes, this medium-density residential with all of that traffic and the considerations of the parameters around it, to me, wouldn't be conducive of a residence that had children, a residence that had senior adult populations, and it's not a good fit. I would much rather see, and I think for the betterment of our county, that medium-density residential line be placed where it currently is now, and allow this storage facility to act as a buffer, uh, between that and the future development. Next slide. All right, so this slide gives you a visual of what that walled area would look like, you can kind of see it on the northeast picture. Um, there's a wall, it'll have a fence because of the height of the wall on the top of it, but it'll also, as you can see here, it'll have plantings, these aren't the exact plantings, but it'll have plantings on the east side. So this gives you a, or the north side, this gives you a visual of, you know, how nice that wall would look and will, is going to look, uh, in the future if this project is approved, and how this could be an amenity and a, something pleasant to look at, rather than the vehicles, rather than all of the other sound pollution and things like that that I've already mentioned. I believe this project checks all the boxes that I have been listening to from this board, as well as the Planning and Development Commission Board. Uh, it keeps storage off of our main highways, it provides a transition zone and a lower intense commercial use prior to medium-density residential starting, and it protects the integrity of our land use map by not providing areas of spot zoning or outcroppings of medium-density residential where currently GNC is, as I've shown on the map. And with that, I look forward to answering any additional questions that you guys may have.
I just have one, if you, I'll go out, because I just have one. Um, these trees and shrubs or whatever you're planting, how are you going to water them? Because you said there's no water. Will you do a sprinkler system?
Yeah, so this is something you guys probably could address, uh, at a later time, but currently, there's no code for sprinkler system, I think there should be. If we have requirements for plantings, we should plant them and keep them protected. So this site, uh, more than likely will have to have a well, uh, for that purpose, to maintain that.
You can go out there every week and?
No, I wouldn't want to do that. And where it is, where it is, you would want to have some type irrigation because of the, the access. But right now, there's, there's nothing. City of Emory, City of Prestor, if those municipalities have ways of protecting the landscape buffers that they require, we do not. Unless I'm, unless I'm wrong.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Finnigan.
Um, hi, Doctor Wilburn, I'm, I was just curious with the picture that you showed. So it's going to be the walls facing the storage units, and then the plants are on the other side of it, correct?
On the north side.
And is there room where someone could maintenance the plants and the wall without having to go on the other property?
Yeah, you'll be able to access it from the road.
Okay.
Yes, that's a good question.
Thank you.
Very good.
Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Bayes? Lighting. What type of lighting will you have there?
All right, so most storage facilities, and, and this one would be the same way, they don't have posts, they don't have light poles. The lighting is strictly for the roadway, uh, or, or, um, a, a door access required by code. So on this site plan, you'll see the lighting would be in between the aisleway. What we normally do would be put one on one corner, and then every fifty feet, we would stagger them on the internal roadway. And then at the rear, you would just have one small light at both doors. There wouldn't be any poles or anything like that.
Okay.
And the lighting would be subject to the LDC standards, but we wouldn't be proposing any poles.
And what would the facade on the front look like?
Um, we were, we didn't ask for any deviations, so we would comply with the Land Development Code. We would have projections every thirty feet, uh, some stone features, no exposed metal, things like that.
And, uh, you indicated there would be fencing on top of that wall.
Yes, there, there'll be fencing around the entire parcel.
Can it, is it going to be like chain link fencing? Is that the type of fencing or?
Which would you propose? That, I, we haven't got that far, we would just comply with the LDC. It could be, could be fencing that's shielded, i- if that was the pleasure of the board, it could be PVC. Wouldn't ma- wouldn't matter to us, it just needs to be secure.
Well, if it's going to be some kind of chain link fencing, I prefer it to be black as opposed to?
I agree.
Steel.
And the, the fencing that was shown in the picture was like a wrought iron type look, which would also be acceptable.
That'd be, yes. And I guess my hangup would be is like, um, the landscaping, even though there's, you know, if you're saying we don't have it in our code right now, but, but we are saying that you have to maintain the landscaping, so if we're requiring you to put it in, and I'm going to be adamant about this one, all developments that, that landscape standards be maintained.
So with a, let me, let me clarify something I said. The, the way of enforcement for you guys on a PUD is, is part of the PUD. If it was something that was just being built as a master plan that didn't need board approval, there's no mechanism to go backwards, to my knowledge. But as a part of this PUD, all of the conditions would have to be met and maintained.
All right, I think that's good for me, Brian.
Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
Sorry, I have, um, so tell me where the doors are again, you said there's no doors facing the MDR in the retention area? Because there's no room for them anyway.
You'll have garage doors and probably two man doors going down the main roadway on, on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
And then you'll have a man door on both ends of this way and both ends this way.
Short ends, yeah. Okay, so the, the, um, north-facing wall and the south-facing wall will have no doors?
No doors.
Okay.
There's no access.
And even though you're going to have our, our, uh, access code management, is there going to be limited hours? Like after midnight, you can't go in till five AM or something or?
Nothing is proposed. But again, uh, I don't know if, if any of you guys talked about site visits, but, uh, if you look at the topography, uh, when you pull into this site, drive in, turn around and go out, you're so high up that you don't have any, there's no screening of headlights that you would go onto any neighbors, because they're, they're down low.
It's more of a security, uh, um, people use these units for odd reasons, so that's my only concern is that.
It is right next to the sheriff's building too. That, that might help, maybe.
She was going to do a she shed, is what she was talking about.
Those arcs anywhere?
Okay, thank you, sir. Joe, is it you?
Yes, ma'am, it's my turn. Uh, Doctor Wilburn actually gave a pretty good, uh, rundown of what this application is. Um, but they are requesting to change the land use, the future land use to general commercial. The Atlas is already general commercial on subject property, and establish a, a planning and development for many warehouses. Um, as he stated, this did have to go to the Planning Commission twice. He went originally back in November of twenty-twenty-two, and then the Planning and Development Commission recommended denial. And so in an effort to address some of their concerns, he made some revisions to the plan, uh, prior to coming to the Board of County Commissioners. And because of the amount of changes that were made, it was deemed that he should go back to the Planning Commission to see if they would, you know, change the recommendation based on what those revisions were. What the revisions were that, uh, that he did was, he went from three buildings to two, as you can see on the master plan. The square footage was reduced by about two thousand square feet, he's asking for twenty-five thousand square feet. There were some circulation changes, he updated some of the landscaping, and, uh, added the retaining walls for the DRAs. And so he did go back to the Planning and Development Commission on February second, they recommended denial of the revisions as well. Um, staff does find that the intensity for this proposal is still high based on the neighboring residential land uses, and, and so this proposal is not compatible with the area. For a couple of points, uh, just for clarifications, per the Land Development Code, when you have a type D buffer that requires a wall, the plantings have to be between the wall and the property line, so you can't put the wall and put all the plantings inside of it, they have to be outside. And there are some requirements for irrigation in the Land Development Code. Basically, it says you have to maintain your landscaping, however it is, you have to do that. And so we do promote Florida-friendly and zirkscape kind of landscaping, but if they want to put in something that requires irrigation, then they need to provide that to keep those plants alive, so.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it for me.
I, I did see the, the Florida-friendly and, and, um, you know, plenty of Florida-friendly trees aren't gonna, I mean, in the beginning, is, it's imperative they get watered, but it will cut down fertilization and, and, um, messing with up our aqua for the runoff, but, um, I'm just going to come right out here, and if it's okay. Do I have to open it up to the public now, or is it us?
You might want to wait till you hear more testimony from the public.
And I, I have a, I have a question for Joe.
Okay.
Um, can you just, um, remind me what a type D buffer is?
Yes, ma'am, a type D buffer is plantings that are different types of planting, so it's trees, shrubs, and conifers per hundred feet. I don't remember what the exact number is, but it's like six trees, twenty-four shrubs, and a certain number of conifers per hundred linear feet, and it has the requirement for a wall.
So what is the delta between type D with a wall and the twenty-foot type C that he's proposing? On the north and east walls?
It would be the addition of the conifers, it would be the required width, and it would be the, the requirement for a wall. So a type C is six trees and twenty-four shrubs per hundred feet, no wall, no conifers required.
Okay. And, but you said per hundred feet, so, but the width here that he's suggesting is twenty, what is the width that is on a type D?
Right, uh, the twenty-foot type D minimum is twenty-foot wide, twenty-five preferred, and it would be for a hundred linear feet, so he's almost three hundred linear feet for that north property line.
So it's just the density, it's not the, it's not the width of the, the buffer, it's the density that, and the wall, that he's fallen short with the type C?
Yes, for, for this proposal, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so am I looking for a motion or a public comment first?
You want to have public input?
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak? Come forward. You'll have three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm here for, uh, Mr. Michael Carpenter.
If you could give us your name and where you live.
Thank you, my name is May Jones, I live at two oh five South Salisbury Terrace in La Canto, Florida. And, um, I thank you for allowing me to be here and to express my wishes and concerns in this matter. And my husband, Tom, and I live at two oh five South Salisbury Terrace in La Canto, which is butted up right to, next to the property in question. And if you could show the, uh, zoning map again, please, that would be very helpful. Okay, all right. We have two lots, which is Lot Four and Lot Nine, which is located from Salisbury all the way over to Kensington. We have, uh, almost ten acres there. And, uh, this property has been in my husband's family since nineteen sixty-six, when their little house on top of the hill had a great view of the immense watermelon patch, which is now known as Citrus Hills. As you can only imagine how many changes we have seen over time, including the Holiday Inn Express and the strip mall and the church without walls, which is separated by a retention area. We can hear the guests at the hotel laughing and splashing in the pool at the Holiday Inn Express. The property line, their property line butts up to our property line. It, we're separated by another retention area right there. We have had a, on few occasions where their guests have thought our property was an adjacent park where they could exercise or walk their dogs, as my husband does a great job of keeping our place looking very pristine. And we very, we then very politely advise the guests that we are private property owners and direct them to Whisperin' Pines Park. I'm saying all this to say that we also, we are also next door butted up to the property which is owned by the same gentleman who owns Michael's floor covering. He's a very well-known and respected businessman who we feel would not intentionally do anything to to jeopardize our quiet and peaceful life here in our quiet little area of the community. I personally have faith in Mr. Michael Carpenter's judgment in this matter. I have spoken to him about his plans to build a small mini-storage next door to us. We are convinced that his plans will not affect our property, as he has explained the retention slash drainage area, as well as answered any questions that arose from that conversation. We would like to agree with the plan to build the mini-storage We would like to agree with the plan to build the mini storage facility, which I feel would be better for our community. I do realize we in Citrus County have many storage areas, but I also feel that Michael's floor covering could also use a storage area to enhance his own business as well. I have seen many rentals, rental storage containers being used by his business on several occasions as, as he probably ran out of room as, in his business storage area. Finally, I have been informed that the other option for the lot addressed 255 South Salisbury is multi-housing units such as duplexes or, uh, multiple family housing. I cannot express my concern and disbelief in this recommendation enough. We, as the next door property owners, oppose this line of thinking as we feel any of you that lived at our property, if you were honest with yourselves, would agree. You are all welcome to come and visit our beloved little home, homestead, and then make your educated decision in this matter. Thank you for your time, sincerely, May Jones. I would like to point out that the, um, if you can see the properties up above where the property is next door in the blue. Lot, lot number four is the first one, that's our home. And the other five acres is grandpa's home where our daughter lives. And she is right next door to the Holiday Inn Express as well as we are. And I feel that it would be totally, um, against our, you know, country-type living away from, two miles away from Walmart. That is, uh, we just don't want to give that up. So we feel that the storage unit would be the much better choice than to do multiple housing. We just can't explain it, but.
Well, it's, I think you did a very good job explaining that.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones.
Thank you. All right.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Michael Carpenter, I'm the person everybody's been talking about, I guess.
Oh wait, I gotta put my mean face on.
Uh, I live at, uh, 1150 South Estate Point, Inverness. This property, uh, we bought, um, well, first let me start by talking about myself a little bit. I've lived in this county for 51 years, moved up from Orlando where I was born. Me and my wife have three children, three grandchildren who all live and work in this town. You know, we donate to every cause that we can, um, whether it's children's activities, to seniors, Santas, we, we help the communities much as we can. Also, I'm the owner of Michael's Floor Covering, of course, for 22 years. Um, I've been doing flooring in this town since 1986. Our, um, our company, um, is family-owned and operated. My son works for us, my daughter works part-time for us. And it's just hard to explain, but we're our family, very family-oriented. We purchased this property knowing it was GNC, thinking, uh, that we would put these storage units up here, not realizing that the future land use was medium density. So that was a little bit of a, a shock for us. But our proposed, our proposed project is, is not on a main road on 44 like Dr. Wilburn said. Also, none of our neighbors have any concern. I've talked to every person that's adjacent to this property or across the road. And nobody has any concerns whatsoever. In fact, they'd rather have our storage units than five or six duplexes or, you know, multifamily homes. That's, that's it, I appreciate y'all's consideration. Uh, again, I just wanted to put a face to a name, so, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Commissioners, my name is Michael Serwinski, I'm speaking as a citizen today. My, uh, home address is 1129 North Chance Way, Inverness, which is in Cambridge Greens nearby this facility. I sat in on the PDC meeting and, um, I think it's an appropriate buffer from medium-density residential to commercial, I think it's well thought out. I do have question for either staff or Michael Wilburn on the site plan. Uh, and that is traffic circulation. Uh, it appears to me from the site plan that you're either gonna have to back out of this storage facility or you're gonna have to use the back-to-back out and do a three-point turn out. And my question to staff is, uh, is there appropriate radius there for the fire department to turn their engines around? Because most, uh, facilities like this need a certain radius to have the fire and whether fire commented or not on this application. Other than that, I think it's, uh, an appropriate use, I think it's in the right place. And it does extend that line that you obviously see of commercial across the way and connects it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak on this subject? You've got one chance, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones. Going once, going twice, okay, I'm gonna close the public comment part, portion of this. So at this point, we need a discussion from the board and then a motion in a second if it, uh, the board decides.
Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I like the project, I like that it's not on the main road, I like that it's gonna meet our LDC code with a, uh, a stone or some type of masonry facade that will not be metal. Uh, I like that it is going to produce, uh, additional, uh, property taxes for the county without demanding any, uh, fire, EMS or police services, or unlikely to need any of those services. Just listening to, uh, Mr. Wilburn, Dr. Wilburn's presentation, uh, I thought that he made a great case that it was a good buffer uh, between the, uh, the commercial area of the Sheriff's Department's maintenance facility area and, uh, uh, Michael's, uh, Michael's commercial business there. And then we heard from the neighbor, uh, directly abutting it, that this is something that they would actually desire to keep, uh, the voices down that they're hearing, from other commercial properties, uh, further to the east. So, um, if you're open to it, I would like to, I would make a motion that we approve this, as presented with the, uh, with the C buffer to the, uh, uh, to the north and to the east. The, um, uh, the reason that I, that I believe the C buffer is enough, as I said, that we heard, uh, from the neighbor, uh, that they, they like this project, they're not asking for additional buffering. The buffer to the east, the C buffer to the east, as we saw on the images and Dr. Wilburn, uh, presented, I believe accurately, is that at some point, that piece of property that is currently zoned for medium-density residential will come before, uh, the county commission looking to extend that commercial back to that reasonable line that runs, uh, east and west, uh, next to the, uh, the Holiday Inn there. So I will go ahead and make a motion, uh, that we approve, um, CPA, or the, uh, PUD 22-14.
Second. Based on competent and substantial evidence.
Based on comment and substantial evidence, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan.
Well, I think Commissioner Kennard said it all for me again today, thank you, Commissioner.
He just pushes his weight.
So I'm in favor, I don't think I need to add anymore to what has already been said. Commissioner Baze, anything?
Good project.
Where is he? Dr. Wilburn. This is normally something that I would not approve. Ms. Jones sold it, sold it for me. I was thinking before she spoke, though, this is a, this is a perfect fit for this area. And if all the storage units could be in this situation where it could be a buffer for the home, it's too bad she couldn't get a buffer like this, uh, with Holiday Inn. And, um, so I, I, I am a little concerned about the turnaround, but you guys can figure that out, right? I mean, uh, I mean, I'm sure that's part you, that you're not gonna make the people just completely back out because otherwise I would hit the building if I had to do that, so.
Well, I can say that fire review has not reviewed this plan specifically, but that's something they will look at at time permitting, that they'll have to meet any kind of turn radiuses for, for fire. And, uh, just for a point of clarification, is this motion with the conditions that are in the ordinance? Okay.
How many conditions? He did not state that, uh, what page is that on?
I have it 716 and there's nine conditions in the ordinance.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to know if the, if, uh, Dr. Wilburn, the applicant, is okay with the nine conditions?
Mr. Hockadell, can you help me? Where does it speak to the buffers in these conditions?
It would be number two.
20-foot wide type C buffer with the plantings.
Yeah, so the only thing I would add then is that, uh, the fire department, one of the rules is they require a T-turn that's more than 60 feet long. We're providing 80 feet, so it will meet the current fire coast the way it is. And we're okay with the conditions, thank you.
Okay, and yes, my motion would, uh, include the nine conditions.
Yes, my second would include it as well.
Thank you. Okay, and, um, thank you for bringing this forward and, um, is there any other board discussion? Seeing none, um, I don't have to open it back up to the public, right? Vote, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0, congratulations. Thank you, T2 503. It's 5:53, come on. Oh, should we postpone this, Mary, should we? We're, we're way past 5:0. Okay, so this is the, uh, conduct a public hearing to review and consider PUD 22-08, Local Engineering for Home Assasa Civic Club. Ms. Lynn.
With regard to PUD-22-08, do you have any ex parte communications that you need to disclose, uh, for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Finnegan.
No.
No.
I went to a steak dinner, but I didn't discuss this, so.
Ditto.
No.
Thank you. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you are going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, mandating the Citrus County Land Development Code Atlas by redesignating approximately two acres from the Coastal Lakes Commercial District to the Coastal Lakes Commercial District, the planning unit development for a working waterfront and other non-residential components. Providing for applicability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. And Dr. Wilburn is here to present the application.
Thank you. Michael Wilburn, Local Engineering, Inc., faster? All right. P O Box 938, Florida City, Florida, 34436. Before you, it's approximately two acres. I want to applaud the ladies and gentlemen behind me who have worked so diligently to bring this project before you. I want to thank the staff who has worked with us countless hours and meetings going back and forth to provide you with what you see here, as well as the University of South Florida, who has been, uh, strategic in the implementation of the site plan that you see before you. So, let me describe some of this. Uh, we're looking at a, a, a heritage center, a museum, a cultural center, something to bring to life, the history of the area, uh, and, and to do it in a, in a strategic way, in a planned way. Uh, they've been, they've been able and blessed with some grants. So we're relocating some existing, uh, things that are on this property now. Uh, we're adding two handicap spaces that are not currently on the site. There are some picnic tables and picnic shelters and things like that that we're proposing. And all of these things that I'm telling you are kind of bubbled in on the site plan, maybe you guys have it in front of you, it's really hard for me to see on here. Um, but they're, they're proposed, but with some wiggle room we've allowed for, or we're suggesting and, and hoping you guys would give us the allowability to, to kind of move them and, and fit with trees, fit with other things that may be on site, so that we don't have a, a, a lower impact. There are two playgrounds proposed on site. There probably, in, in reality, will be one, but the best location yet to be determined and that'll be working, uh, hand-in-hand with the, uh, association and, and some other people to determine where those, where that best location might be. Uh, we plan to remodel the existing house and we've already worked with, uh, Carl Jones, who's, who's given up his time, uh, going back and forth with how we can remodel an old house, bring it to ADA, but also not have to go up and keep the historical integrity of that house while adding restrooms and things like that. Um, this site has walking trails around the perimeter and internal walking trails. I've already mentioned the picnic pavilion, there is a, uh, shelter proposed. I don't have a clicker or a pointer, but it's a large structure, um, in the foot, right there, thank you. In the footprint of where one is now. And so we're just simply asking that we be able to restore, uh, put a new building in the same footprint that was there previously. Uh, the boat slips, all right, it's a working waterfront, the boat slips are all there currently right now. We are proposing some internal golf cart parking. And this came up at the PDC, uh, because in the staff report, engineering talks about off-street parking. However, uh, Mr. Hockadell may, may correct me during his presentation, but I believe the Old Home Assasa historic overlay and our LDC provides for off-street parking. And we have shown off-street parking on-site, uh, vehicle parking. There, it's historic, they're doing it now, they have been. Uh, and in other parts of the, uh, the area, if you've ever been out there, you know people park on the side of the street. Uh, so we would like to propose to keep that consistent with the master plan that was submitted and utilize that off-street parking. And the reason is, uh, because of the, the use of this internal park, we want to keep as many vehicles out as possible. We want it to be pedestrian-friendly, we have pedestrian entrances at two corners. Um, we don't want pedestrians and kids running around having to worry about where the vehicles are and things like that. So we would like to propose keeping the parking as we have shown on the master plan. We're presented, uh, we have presented adequate parking, um, per the LDC. And so we would like to, to maintain that. There's a storage shed, uh, located on this master plan. Uh, and again, just some other amenities, uh, some visual signs that we're requesting, uh, the allow, the availability to put on the, the site that are descriptive, that talk about the history, talk about what, maybe certain stations along the walking trail, things like that. So you asked me to be fast, any, any questions?
Thank you. We've been here since 10 and no breakfast, no lunch, no, no nothing.
You're very close.
Like Gilligan's Island.
I was thinking more the Andys, I'm about ready.
I was thinking more like Survivor, but, you know. Start eating our young soon.
Okay, thank you, any questions for the doctor? Nothing? And I'm gonna go to, when it's time to Commissioner Finnegan first this time. Uh, Joe, go.
Yes, ma'am. So this is to establish a master plan, as Dr. Wilburn has stated, for a bunch of different uses. A lot of them have been on-site since at least the 1940s and they're proposing to keep them, keep them there and then with the additional amenities in the park area. The Coastal Lakes Commercial Land Use District, which is what the site is already designated as, allows for all these uses, uh, with the planning unit development. And the Old Home Assasa Community Redevelopment Plan encourages the protection of our working waterfronts in Home Assasa, which is what they're proposing to do. There are some deviations being requested as part of this and Dr. Wilburn kind of touched on it a little bit. One of them is for on-street and grass parking. The Home Assasa overlay does allow for on-street parking. It doesn't necessarily, uh, mandate it or anything, but it does allow for it as part of that. Uh, and the engineering division did have some concerns with that. Although the Planning Development Commission did discuss that deviation and that's part of their approval is to have the on-street parking. Uh, some of the other deviations are for parking landscaping, waterfront setbacks. Right now, the existing structures have, one of them has a zero waterfront setback. The other one has an existing setback, they're requesting 21 feet. The Old Home Assasa overlay requires 40, so anything new would have to be, um, typically would have to be 40 feet, they're requesting at least 21. Right-of-way setbacks, basically the existing structures that have their existing right-of-way setbacks can remain. Anything new would have to meet the front average setback in this area, it's 10 feet. And they're also requesting a 20-year expiration date for this putt. As part of the request, they are also showing some proposed boat slips on the fishing pier, although the comprehensive plan mandatory element doesn't allow for new commercial docking facilities, so that's one thing that would not be supported. But basically everything else that they're proposing meets the comprehensive plan. It's compatible with the area, it's consistent with the character of Old Home Assasa, and it preserves and promotes historic uses. And so the findings of this are positive and the Planning Development Commission did recommend approval.
recommend approval at February 2nd.
Thank you. Do I need to open this up for the public? If you'd like to speak, maybe just one of you?
Fast.
I'm glad it's you. I like you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Beck, and I live at 11145 Yemassee Lane in Old Homosassa. And I'm also a property owner within the affected area for notice. I wanted to come here tonight, very quickly, and give you a history of how, how the Little Homosassa Civic Club came before you tonight. As most of you know, we purchased this property through a Florida Communities Trust grant, specifically the Stan B. Mayfield Working Waterfronts Grant. That grant was awarded to the Homosassa Civic Club, being one of the first 501(c)(3)'s to get such a grant in the state of Florida. We're very proud of that. The whole purpose of this grant was to conserve, preserve, and protect this land and the designation of the working waterfront. The grant came with some very specific restrictions, covenants, and our guiding document, the management plan. And the management plan kind of constricts what we can do with this property, and it provides for the purpose of the award, site development improvement restrictions, business activities, concessions and leases, management needs, funding sources, a priority schedule for improvements, and monitoring and reporting on a yearly basis. As most of you know, all grants from the state require a yearly submittal of a stewardship report on our progress. This meeting tonight will be part of this year's milestones for our stewardship report this year. When the Civic Club realized that we had a, a large task in front of us, the president created a committee, a Heritage Park Committee. And in our first initial meetings, sitting around the room, we recognized that we had incredible expertise and talent sitting in the room, but we didn't have any park planners. So, what we did is, we reached out to the University of South Florida's Office of Community Engagement and Partnership. And we did eventually end up with a contract to create a master plan for us. We were eventually assigned to a professor in the School of Architecture, who had a graduate class on site context and analysis. And that class was divided into five teams, and their focus was to provide five different master plans, with a focus on pedestrian and vehicular circulation, preserving the tree canopy, celebrating the working waterfront and park designs and features. The committee received a final report in September of '22 from the university, and we had five spectacular lofty plans to consider. The committee sat back, we took the best of those plans, and we came to Citrus County planning, and met with Joanna and Joe, who were incredibly supportive and helpful. Thank you both very much. And they recommended that we start the PUD process. And that was in order to fit our vision for this park into the Land Development Code, without a lot of trouble moving forward. What we then reached out to Dr. Michael Wilburn and Local Engineering to help us create a plan, I'm hurrying, a plan and a process, to get us through the process. And I'm here tonight to personally ask you for your favorable consideration of this plan, and our club's efforts to make a quality project. And the Homosassa Civic Club, with your help, looks forward to making this dream a reality for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, I was just teasing, all, every one of you can come up here and take your three minutes. Would anybody else like to speak?
No.
You'd have to come to the microphone. You'd have to come to the microphone. Anybody else? Anybody? Going once? Rodney, going twice?
No, doesn't look like it.
Okay. I'm going to close, so I'm going to close the public portion of this, and I'm going to give it to Commissioner Finnegan, this is her district, so she doesn't get pushed around down there.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I would never think of correcting Madam Chair, but please, everyone knows you don't invite Mayor McRae to the microphone.
Absolutely. Did you see me point? Like, it was just, I was just being polite.
To all of you that's here, I have been happy to get to know many of you, if not most of you, and others in the club. I have never, in my life, and I've been around a lot of nonprofit people, and a lot of volunteers, I've never seen such a group of hard-working individuals, coming out of anywhere, and then Homosassa, that work tires, tirelessly on the things that you do. This park is just one of many that they accomplish to better our community and Homosassa. You had an idea, I've never seen volunteers was, that are such forward thinkers, you had an idea, and you just would not take no for an answer. When you thought help wasn't available, you just kept digging and digging, until you got that help. And you have made something beautiful. So, not only do I want to thank each and every one of you that's here, and those that couldn't make it, but also, I want to give my 100% approval for this project, and I would like a motion, Chair, to accept this project as presented.
And there are how many conditions? With conditions?
Motion with 17.
With, we're, we're good with the conditions, Mr. Wilburn? And Kathy? Okay, yes, with the conditions presented.
So, I'm, there's 17 conditions?
I would be delighted. Was that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bays? I just, there's one condition in here, it says, no, number 11, no additional mooring or boat slips. And you addressed that a little bit, but can you tell me, if this is a working waterfront, why we're limiting that?
So, the working waterfront has existing boat slips, and they can remain and continue to be used as working waterfront. The manatee protection element in our comp plan says that in manatee essential habitat, there's no new commercial docking facilities. And so, everything they have out there right now is fine, and can, they can continue to use it. It's the fishing pier had some boat moorings on it, and so, that would be considered a commercial docking facility per the comp plan. And they can use it for non-motorized vessels, like kayaks and commutes, it just wouldn't be for motorized vessels. But all the other docks that are out there for the working waterfront can remain and continue to be used.
There's no workaround, if they ever want to change that.
Okay. I'll second the motion. So, I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan with the seven, to accept this PUD with the 17 conditions, and a second by Commissioner Bays.
And we made that motion based on competent and substantial evidence, Madam Chair.
You are fantastic. Thank you. Bays, 17 conditions, and is there any other board comments? Commissioner Kennard? Commissioner Bays?
Yes, yes.
Aye.
No. I think this is fantastic. Kudos.
Well, I was told that I did nothing for this project, so I don't even know if you need my vote. And the mayor just said that I had absolutely nothing to do with this. But I, I am very happy for you all, and I'm glad that you were able to get it this far, and congratulations. I know most of you, and I know what good, hard-working people you are, and, and I'm, I'm glad that Commissioner Finnegan is there to see this through. That being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5:0, congratulations. You got, you're two-for-two tonight. And I am going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you. It is 6:10.